At this time, I will reconvene into open session, this meeting of the Arlington Independent School District Board of Trustees for January 13th, 2022, beginning at 7:00 PM on time. Due to health and safety concerns related to the COVID-19 coronavirus, members of the public are encouraged to participate by watching the school board meeting online at www.aisd.net. One or more trustee may participate in this meeting via video conference call. A quorum of the Board of Trustees will be physically present at the administration building. Members of the public may access this meeting via AISD website at www.aisd.net. Thank you all for joining us tonight, and Happy New Year. Our board meetings are open to the public, and we welcome everyone, and thank you for participating in public education. While our meetings are open to the public, this is a meeting, and we have business to conduct, so disruptions will not be permitted. Anyone who disrupts the meeting or speaks when others are speaking may be asked to leave or be escorted out by the security attending the meeting. We welcome civic input, but we insist that we remain respectful and civil. Thank you for your cooperation. So we will start our meeting with the opening ceremony. Please join Mr. Chapa in leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Please silence all cell phones and electronic devices to avoid any disruptions to those around you. And now, if you would please, join me in a moment of silence. Okay, the first item on our agenda is our program and/or presentation, which will be given by the student performance by the all-region junior high orchestra. Ms. Anita Foster, please.
Greetings, President Mays, members of the Board, Dr. Cavassos, everyone here in person, and everyone watching online. When I walked in tonight, and this group was rehearsing, I really thought we had invited a high school performance, perhaps guests from UT Arlington, and then I read the copy and said, "Oh, my gosh, they're junior high school. You're really going to be blown away." This is a combination of students from our junior high schools across the Arlington ISD. They earned their seats in the Texas Music Educators Association Region 5 Junior High Middle School Symphony Orchestra. They earned these seats through competitive auditions across Arlington, Grand Prairie, Mansfield, Fort Worth, and they competed against over 400 students to get these coveted seats, so we're really, really proud of them. They recently participated in the Region Clinic Concert, where they joined together, and they prepared a full concert, which was absolutely fantastic. So tonight, they're going to perform one of those numbers for you, Flower Duet. It was arranged by Albert Wang, conducted by young junior high head orchestra director, Luanne Greer. Congratulations, everyone, on your seats, and take it away.
Amazing. Thank you all so much, and congratulations.
That was very nice.
Testing one-two.
Thank you, Frank, for all you do. Okay, so we will move to our next program on the agenda, and that is our Student of the Month. So for January, our Student of the Month is coming from Lamar High School, so I will turn it over to Principal Andy Hagman to do the introduction. He's doing what he does best, engaging with the students. Please, let me reintroduce Principal Lamar High School, Mr. Andy Hagman.
Good evening. Sorry, we were taking pictures for Instagram, so that's certainly more important than any kind of thing we're going to be talking about. Thank you for having us tonight, Dr. Cavassos, members of the Board. Appreciate it very much. Our Student of the Month is Lillian Graham. She is a senior, and I asked faculty members to give me suggestions for who do you think would be a good representative for us that is very involved in the school, very much making the most of the opportunity that -- opportunities that we provide. And from a number of people, I got Lillian's name. Lillian is that kid that she's not front of the cheer squad, she's not going to be in the forefront, but she is a worker bee everywhere. She is in orchestra, she is in color guard and winter guard, she is in dance, and she is on the yearbook staff, and she makes tremendous grades and takes advantage of advanced courses as well. All of that activity while dealing with the daily challenge of diabetes, which is a struggle, is a challenge for her, but always a smile, always pleasant, always cheerful, and always does fantastically in everything that she undertakes. So Lillian is just an extraordinary example of what Lamar High School has to offer, and we're so, so proud of her.
Thank you so much.
This is Lily.
Hi, Lillian, congratulations.
Thank you.
How are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Good. Feel free to take a few moments to say a few words, introduce anyone that may be here with you.
I have my mom and my dad here.
Hi, Mom and Dad.
They've always been really supportive of the things that I do here and the things that I spend my time with, and I've made a lot of great friends at Lamar, and I love doing what I do, and I've made a lot of good memories.
Very good.
Thank you.
Well, congratulations, Lillian. Dr. Cavassos and I are going to come down and present something with you and take a picture with you, but I just want to say congratulations, and the way Mr. Hagman described all the things that you do in the background, what's interesting is don't forget that people are still watching you. You don't have to be in the front, so what an inspiration and an example you really are showing. So thank you for representing not only Lamar High School, but Arlington ISD.
Thank you.
I actually had to take her out of practice tonight, too, because I may have not done the best job of communicating on time, and so we got popped right out of winter guard practice, and here we are.
Hello, testing. Thank you, Frank. Lillian, what we have to present to you this evening is a pin from the school board, something for you to wear that we give to those that have been a great example for Arlington ISD. Want you to have this pin from us. Dr. Cavassos.
Thank you, and Lillian, congratulations. You represent our students exceptionally well. We're very fortunate to have you in our school system. I wish you the very best, and you deserve this, so this is for you as well.
Okay, the next presentation on our agenda is the Martin Luther King Celebration Art and Essay winners. Ms. Anita Foster, please.
Yes, thank you, President Mays. Members of the Board, Dr. Cavassos, unfortunately, we had to postpone this year's Martin Luther King Jr. Celebration, but we are not going to postpone the excitement around it. We have a special guest tonight, Pastor Kennedy Jones, president of the Arlington Ministerial Association and chairman of the 2022 Advancing the Dream Celebration, is here tonight to recognize our artists and our essay winners. Come on up.
President May, this distinguished Board is an honor to appear before you, especially to present these winners and the great work they have done. In art, our third-place winner was Alexi Alvarez from Bowie High School. And if you could stand. And our second-place winner is Haley Thompson from Arlington High School. And our first-place winner is Keith Johnson from Martin High School.
Yeah, it looks like we've got Keith on the screen here.
Okay, wonderful. And we want to thank each of them for entering and for accomplishing this feat in the work that they have done. It's not something you do in a minute, but they did some really great work, and the artwork was outstanding. Our essay winners, you may be seated. Our essay winners. Third-place winner was John Paul Braulow from Seguin High School. Second-place winner was Janaye Brown from Sam Houston. And our first-place winner was Lamaya Battle from Seguin High School. And again, we want to thank them for participating and for the great work that they did in accomplishing this goal. We thank you. And then we want to take a moment to thank the Arlington AISD and to let you know that we have not postponed, we have not canceled, but we have postponed the MLK four-day celebration events until later in February or maybe as late as in April. Time and the health condition permitted, we will carry on this work, because the work of the man is more important than just a holiday. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor Jones. Congratulations to our art and our essay winners. Thank you all very much for participating, doing things outside of your regular school day that you feel are important to you, and being able to be recognized for that, I think is very important. So congratulations again. Pastor Jones or Anita, is there any way that the Board can maybe receive copies of the essays so we can read them?
We can make that happen.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, next on our agenda is a presentation for school board recognition presentation. Mrs. Foster.
Before we introduce our guests tonight, on behalf of all of the staff at the Arlington ISD, we want to thank you, school board. It's School Board Recognition Month. You guys do so much every day as volunteers, and I don't know that a lot of people know that. I think it's important that people know your commitment, of time, your energy, your brain power, your love, it's apparent to all of us, and we just want to say thank you. We do have a presentation tonight, and this year's theme for School Board Appreciation Month is Rising Above, very, very fitting. Every year, students from the district create pieces of art, and they present them to you to say thank you on our behalf for all that you do for students and for staff, parents in the community. So tonight, Ms. Joni Rinker Dozier's class is the, they are the artists that will be presenting the artwork tonight. Mrs. Dozier is at Owlesley Junior High in the Visual Arts Department. Ms. Dozier, please come on up. Let's introduce your students and present the art.
My heart rate just got a little faster. All right, good evening, President Mays, Dr. Cavassos, and Board members. My name's Joni Rinker Dozier, and I'm an art teacher at Owlesley Junior High. I've been teaching at Owlesley for the past 25 years, since its inception, room 410. I'd like to start by thanking my family, my friends, my administration at Owlesley for their encouragement and support of the fine arts. I truly appreciate it. I'd also like to thank the district for your valued vision and support for fine arts. Truly amazing. This district is extraordinary when it comes to fine arts, and I truly thank you from the bottom of my heart. All right, speaking of extraordinary, this school board has risen above tirelessly during the past year and a half, during this pandemic as well, navigating through controversial topics, strategic plans, creating budgets, adopting policies, all handled with professionalism. All right, and as we know, January is School Board Recognition Month. We would like to thank all of you for being dedicated volunteers. We appreciate all the time and energy that you have put in on behalf of our children, teachers, schools, community, all geared towards student success. Tonight, we say thank you to each of you, excuse me, for rising above and volunteering, voluntarily being advocates for our students, teachers, schools, and community. All right, my students had the honor to create for you an artwork visually representing what they meant, what meant to them to rise above, given the enormous obstacles and situations this past year and a half. They have created for you their version of rising above and overcoming challenges. I am so proud of their work that they have created for you. I would like to introduce to you a few artists that you volunteer your time for endlessly from Owlesley, and thank you for rising above. Okay, my first student, Meshak, he was unable to make it, but this is for Mr. Chapa. Meshak's eighth-grade goal is to pass eighth grade with A and B honor roll, and when he grows up, he wants to be an NFL player.
Justin, can you stay down there, and then at the end, we want to take pictures if we can, including with you, Ms. Dozier.
Okay, Jennifer Udo. Jennifer's eighth-grade goal is to enjoy eighth-grade year and to get into collegiate high school. When she grows up, she wants to be a really good surgeon. And this is for McCullough. I'm sorry.
Sarah McMorrow.
McMorrow. Thank you. Sorry. What's that? Yeah, she's going to come down. Yeah, you can turn it around. I'm sorry, Sarah. I know I met you. I don't know, did they stay up here?
Yes, please, stay, yes.
Stay next to your person?
Yes.
Okay, Adrian Rubio Gonzalez. And Dr. Cavassos? Okay, Adrian's eighth-grade goal is to pass with all As and pass all the STAR tests. When he grows up, he wants to be an artist. He's a really good. Isn't that beautiful? As for superintendent, you are an artist. Okay, I have Carolyn Nguyen next. And President Mays? Okay, Carolyn would like to pass all her classes with high grades, is her eighth-grade goal, and when she grows up, she wants to be an artist. Want to show her? And Samantha Redell. Okay, Samantha's eighth-grade goal is to not get too stressed out about grades, and when she grows up, she wants to be an architect. All right, and, yes. Ixelle Lincoln. Ixelle's eighth-grade goal is to enjoy being a kid, and when she grows up, she wants to own her bakery or restaurant. And Abby Retarte. Her eighth-grade goal is to keep healthy relationships, and when she grows up, she wants to be a pediatrician or OB-GYN. And Kathy Ramirez. Her eighth-grade goal is to become better at things that she enjoys, like art, and when she grows up, she wants to be a medical examiner. I can speak in front of kids all day, but.
Okay, Sance, can you come and take a picture? Ms. Dozier, I would like for you to be included as well.
We're still getting everybody at once.
Should we scooch in? Scooch in, guys, scooch in.
I'm sorry, Sarah.
I do. Thank you so much.
Scoot that way, I don't want to shoot this.
Hey, Boyd.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
I got you dropping your bat.
Okay, so first of all, just speaking for the board, thank you very much for that recognition. Very much appreciated, very thoughtful, and I do just have to say, everybody at my job, in my office, I have every single painting that I've ever been presented as I've served as trustee on my wall filling in my office, and every time I look at it, it just brings me so much joy and just reminds me of why we do what we do. Okay, next on our agenda is our appointments, our administrative ratifications and appointments. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Mays, and I'd like to recommend that the board ratify the appointments of the individuals discussed in closed session for Assistant Principal for Johns Elementary and Assistant Principal for Larson Elementary.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the administrative ratification as discussed in executive session?
Move for approval.
You have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Hogg, a second by Mrs. Fowler, any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. All present voted in the affirmative, unanimous passing. Thank you very much.
Thank you, President Mays, and I'd like to introduce our new Assistant Principal for Johns Elementary. This is a ratification, so they, she has been working already, but it's Flor Flores. And Flor comes as a campus testing facilitator, most recently at Wimbish, has been a kindergarten bilingual teacher, a kindergarten bilingual teacher at Morton, and you see her information there. She went to UT Arlington for Bachelor of Arts and UT Arlington for Master of Education. Congratulations to Flor Flores. Next, the Assistant Principal for Larson Elementary is Bradley Pennington. Bradley attended UT Tyler for Bachelor of Science and UT Tyler for Master of Education, as you see there. Most recently, our avid coordinator at Nichols Junior High and has taught the career CTEI class and has been an avid tutor. Congratulations to Bradley as well. That concludes our appointments.
Very good, thank you, Dr. Cavassos. Next on our agenda is our Texas Academic Performance Report, the public hearing.
Thank you, President Mays, and at this time, I'd like to introduce Natalie, Dr. Natalie Lopez. There you go. That will lead us through this presentation of our TAPER report. Dr. Lopez.
President Mays, members of the board, Dr. Cavassos, thank you for your time. I'm reviewing the results of our 2020-2021 Texas Academic Performance Report. This is an annual report, as you know, and much of what you will see, we have already gone through in prior board meetings and presentations, so I will move swiftly and hit highlights. So, the Texas Academic Performance Report is, describes educational performance of our district and the campuses within the district. It's intended to inform the public of our academic standing, again, of the district and then of the campuses compared to the district, to the state, and to comparable schools. Now Arlington is large, and the report that we get is over 1,000 pages long, so I'm going to keep it to the district level. All the campus reports and our district TAPER report are available on the website. So, looking at our TAPER measures, oh, I'm sorry, I'm not moving, I was moving with my pages and not with the report, the presentation, I apologize. Looking at the TAPER measures, we have performance, participation, attendance, graduation and dropout rates, college career and military readiness, student information, and staff information. Now, before we review those measures specifically, I want to provide y'all with some information on how those impact accountability. So, as, due to the impact of COVID-19, TEA did not issue A to F accountability ratings for the 2020-21 school year. All districts and campuses were rated, labeled, not rated, declared state of disaster for 2021. However, it remains critical for, you know, parents, students, policymakers, legislatures, administrators to understand academic standing of students, and so we continued on with our annual end of year assessments. So, we were able to give the STAR, the STAR alt-two, Tellpass, and the Tellpass alternate test. One note to look forward to accountability upcoming is that, as required by the Senate Bill 1365, academic accountability ratings will be limited to A, B, C, or not rated. Districts and campuses are not going to be receiving D or F ratings this upcoming accountability year. So, even, what that means is like even if mathematically they fall into a D or F category, they're not going to receive a D or F rating, they'll get not rated. So, moving back to our 2021 accountability rating, we were not rated, no one was rated. Not only were, was the district not rated, but we received incomplete raw score data because the domains couldn't be calculated in the same way, we did not receive any scaled score information for the domains, so nothing that we can, nothing that we can use to determine a rating. No distinctions were given either. So, I'm going to move into the actual performance portion of the TAPER, and for this, normally the TAPER report does your current year and then the prior year. Well, we didn't have STAR or EOC tests in 2020, so what's included in this year's TAPER is actually looking back two years to 2019. So, I'll report out on all subjects first, and this is at the approaches grade level standard, that's a satisfactory passing standard. So, for 2021, we have a 58%, that's down 16 from 74% in 2019. That drop can be seen across all of the subgroups that are reported out there. You have African American, Hispanic, white, American Indian, Asian, Pacific Islander, two or more races, special education, economically disadvantaged, and ELL, and those all show that same decrease. For reading, for 2021, we were at 61%, that's down nine from the 2019's 70%. Reading had the smallest decrease of the subject areas, however, it was shown across all of the subgroups. For math, we were at 53% in 2021, down 25% from the 2019's 78%. This subject area has the largest decrease of all of our subjects, and that one also is seen across all of our subgroups. For writing, for 2021, we're at 47%, that's a decrease of 16% from 2019's 63%. For writing, the decrease is across all of the subgroups. Might see that, for example, Pacific Islander is down 37%, that seems much larger than the all-student category. However, with some of our smaller subgroups like that, the, that's not really attributed to anything other than the fact that it's a small number, so when you have small numbers, it's easier for them to fluctuate one way or another, and so I don't think any particular attention needs to be paid to the subgroup, but I just wanted to point out that if you see something like that with those smaller groups, that, that's the reason why most of the time. For science, 2021, we're at 60%, that's down 17% from 2019's 77%, and science is down across all of the subgroups, of course, with the exception of that Pacific Islander group, which actually shows an increase. I wouldn't think there's anything there other than that, that, something that can be attributed to the small number of that group. And for social studies, we are at 68%, down 11% from our 2019 value of 79, and that is across the board for all of our subgroups, with the exception of two or more races, which just maintained, however, again, that two or more races is a small category, and so I don't see any need to look into that for anything in particular. Now, what, the last subgroup on the last couple of slides were ELL, and that's our English language learners. That's actually comprised of students that receive bilingual services and then ESL services, so those have been split out, and since we're just looking at the bilingual subgroup in particular, I'm showing all the, all the subjects on the one slide here. So, what you can see for our 2021 results for the all-subjects for bilingual, it's at 42%, and that is down 27. Reading is at 46%, that is down 20. Math is 44%, down 34. Writing is at 27%, that was down 33, and then science is at 33%, which was down 19%. Now for ESL, for 2021, the all-subject group is 46%, that is down overall from 2019 from 15%. Now, reading is at 49%, that's down four. Math is 46%, and that's down 27. Writing is 37%, down 14. Science is 49, down 14, and social studies is 42, and that is also down 14. Interestingly, this group in the ELL category, but it seems like it has less of a decrease than the bilingual, might be due to the fact that the ESL services are received up through high school, and, you know, we didn't see as much, in particular, if you look at reading, it's only down 4%. We didn't see as much of a drop in English I or English II scores across the state, and so that might be the reason why there's less of an impact on the ESL versus the bilingual, which stops in those elementary grades. Moving into participation, as to participation requirements, hold for, actually, this, this slide should be updated, it says requirement is still 95%, so it's not so much that the requirement was waived as much that it was, wasn't calculated in our accountability rating. So, the state of Texas was at 88% participation for the students, AISD was at 86%. So even though both the district and the state are under that 95% requirement, it didn't have the impact, and so no scores were calculated, it didn't do anything to ratings. What will typically happen, though, in a regular year, is if you're under the 95% requirement, then you, TA sort of puts in these false failure, this false failure idea, and I don't think they're called that anymore, but it's that concept where they'll put in failing scores up till you reach the requirement of the 95%. So, we were only at 86% last year, we want to make sure that things look like they're going as they are, that we hit the 95% participation this year. I'll move into attendance rate, and so performance and participation is from prior spring, so 2021, but attendance is from, the, looks at the difference from the 2019 and the 2020 school year. So, our 2020 attendance had an increase, 97.6% in the all-student category, which is a gain of 2.6 from our 95% in 2019, and those attendance rates are up, kind of right around that 1% to 3% across all of the subgroups. The four-year graduation rate, like attendance, looks at two years back, so this is 2019 and 2020. Our graduation rates increased for our 2020, they're at 90.5, that's an increase of 2.6% from 2019's 87.9%. And almost across the board, all the subgroups had that, reflect that increase, again, that Pacific Islander category that has that small number, that's the only one that's different than the other subgroups. There were efforts prior to COVID for moving towards graduation, in addition to maybe some of that COVID grace that might be account for that increase, but nobody really determined specifically. The inverse of the graduation is the dropout rate, so what you see here is that in 2020 it was at 6.4%, that's down 1.6% from the rate in 2019, which was at eight, and so that makes sense, the graduation was up, dropout was down, and dropout stayed down for all the subgroups, of course, with the exception of that Pacific Islander. We also, even if students don't graduate in that traditional four years, try to get them to graduate regardless, and so we have five-year graduation rates. Those are from the cohorts in 2018 and 2019, and so there is an increase in the 2019 of 91.1%, and that's up a half a percent from what it was for that 2018 cohort, which was at 90.6%. And, you know, being it only a difference of a half a percent, being so close to zero, you see that some of the subgroups fall above zero, some fall below, so not, not really any consistent trend across the, the subgroups on that. But it does align with our five-year dropout rates, which, for the all-student group, were decreased of negative 0.7%, so 7.8% for 2019, and it was at 8.5% for 2018. I'll move into the student data portion. Our total students in membership were 56,783. Do have a bit of a drop there from the prior year, the state shows 5,359,040. The state also experienced a drop of their students. The ethnic distribution for our district is, it's, we're a diverse school district, and it doesn't exactly align to the state, but it's very similar. I'll go into the specific percentages on the next slide. Going to skip down onto the economically disadvantaged category there, so we're at 74.3%, whereas the state is at 60.3%, so we are above the state on economically disadvantaged. We are up in ECODIS for, from the prior year, which I believe was 72.1. Our English language learners are at 29.6%, also higher than the state, which is 20.7%. Now, the ECODIS and the ELL, they have a relationship, they fall into the at-risk category amongst other things, and so our at-risk is 59.7, that makes sense that that would be larger than the state's, which is 49.2, given that our ECODIS and our, our ELLs are higher than the state, so. Now, looking at the student ethnic distribution, our largest student group, our Hispanic students at 47.1%, followed by our African American students at 25.8%. White students are 17.9% of our population, Asian is 5.8%, and then we have a very small slice of the pie of our other subgroups, and in that, we have two or more races at 2.8%, American Indian at a half a percent, and Pacific Islander at 0.2%. Our staff data shows that our total staff in the district was 8,168 employees, obviously under the state, which was 745,316. An area here to look at, our teachers was 50.4% of our staff, that is just slightly higher than the state, which was 49.6, but our teachers make up about half of our, our staff, and then our central administration is only a half of a percent, which, it's a half of a percent, and it's half of what the state's percentage is, and so we're, we're not top-heavy, we have more teachers than, than the state as far as percentages go, and less administration. Our student per teacher ratio is 13.8, lower than the state's, which is 14.5, and our instructional staff percentage is 64.3, that's also lower than the state, which is 64.6, I mean, slightly lower, I wouldn't, nothing significant there, but that instructional staff percentage is, is just a measure of time, so the number of time, total hours spent on instruction over the total number of hours worked by everybody in the district, and so, kind of right there with the state there. Moving into our operating expenditure values from all funds, our total operating expenditures per student in the district are 10,064, little lower than the state's, 10,406. For instruction, kind of right, right there, neck and neck, 5,890 for instruction per student, which, whereas the state is 5,929. I won't go through, I let you kind of look through the rest of those categories for the all funds, however, general administration is almost half of what it is for the state, 195 compared to the 335 for the state. And then this next view just shows those operating expenditures in percentages instead of in values, and so you can just kind of see, there, there is some slight differences from what, what is happening in our district to, to the state, so. The last part of our financial data is our instructional expenditure ratio from our all funds, and for the district, that's 63%, for the state of Texas, it's 63.8, just slightly under that. And our unassigned general fund balance, as a percentage of the budget, that is 37. And our unassigned general fund balance, um, as a percentage of the budget, that is thirty-seven point one percent. Uh, for the state, it's twenty-seven point two. There are links to the actual, um, type of report and then the financial, um, slides that were at the end, uh, available in the PowerPoint, I do believe you guys also have that paper copy. And that is what I have for you today, so I'll go ahead and stop there and let y'all ask questions.
Thank you very much, Dr. Lopez. Um, do I have any trustees with questions? Mrs. Fowler?
Thank you, President Mays. Very thorough report, thank you so much, thank you. I had one question on the slide about participation.
Yes, ma'am.
Could that be, I know that there were a lot of issues with, um, um, STAR not working on the computer and various things like that, power outages and just all kinds of, of things that were going on. Could, could that account for any of the participation with the drop?
So, um, the issues that were related to any technology were addressed quickly. Um, and from what I know, that was not throughout the entirety of the test. Without knowing specifically which students were impacted, I can't speak a hundred percent confidently to whether that impacted that individual level student participation. Um, but overall, it, if they had an issue with technology, they had opportunity and time to hop on and take it again. Um, and campuses were, technology was quick to respond to that and campuses were quick to respond. And I think did, had really good efforts at getting those students back on and, um, and tested. But I can't, uh, can't speak a hundred percent for each individual student. So, but overall, I would say, I don't think that that is a main driver for participation being under.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Fowler, Mr. Chapa.
Thank you, President Mays, I just had, uh, one question, and that is, do you have a sense of how our academic performance reflected in these reports compares to other districts that are similarly situated with us throughout the state?
We do, um, and we had done some analyses where we looked at our, our percentile ranking based on our scores, um, by subject. And it, we did have more of, well, we did drop in our percentile rank as compared to where we were in prior years.
Okay, would you say that it was, it was a, because I know so many districts have been, um, have had similar issues with pretty severe sharp drops in performance because of the COVID year, and this is what this represents. And so I just, i- i- is it a sense that we're in line with that, um, in the same ballpark? Or is it, or are we noticeably different in any particular area?
You know, based on the percentile rank, we had more of a drop. Um, the, there were other factors that go into that, however, uh, we had a lower participation than the districts that we typically compare ourselves to, um, kind of overall. And so without really knowing how those students, uh, performed, I can't really s- I can't give you the full picture, but in the percentile ranks that we did with the data that we had, yes, we did experience a drop that, um, just seemed larger than, uh, those that we normally compared to.
Right, and it's sort of, I mean, it's sort of a wonky deal where it's not historically in line with what our practices are around STAR, where almost every single kid takes it because we're in person. And there were, you know, students who were at home, didn't have to come in to take it. And it was pretty widely publicized, and I suspect a bunch of the students knew that it didn't count. Um, and so I just know that there's so many of these confounding variables at play that, um, that seem to have affected other districts across the state, that we know we have work to do. And this reflects that, but, you know, I think it's going to be the, we're going to need a couple of years, if not, we don't get it this year, because who knows what's going to happen with STAR this year, um, to be able to see where we really are, because these, this data comes from such a unusual year and an unusual situation. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chapa, Mr. Will Banks.
Thank you, President Mays, and, um, thank you, Dr. Lopez. Um, I guess, you know, there are some bright, bright spots, number one, as you pointed out, the, uh, graduation rates and the dropout rates are better than expected. Just a little bit, but, you know, given such a difficult year and what we've heard with students across the country, you know, we would have expected to see a drop, and we didn't, so that's good. Um, as my colleague, Mr. Chapa, pointed out that, um, and through our conversations that we've had in uni- the past, we know we've had a precipitous decline, especially in mathematics, we have challenge areas. And we know, um, we have work to do. I do want to stress to teachers that, you know, unfortunately, this year's been just as challenging with operational, um, issues, uh, especially recently with the Omicron variant, and that it is going to take time, and it is going to take multiple years. And that, um, there's a lot of anxiety around the fact that we need to catch kids up, and we will, it's just going to take time. So, you know, hopefully, teachers are not feeling that extra pressure now, given what we're going through operationally. And I had, um, a few questions with things that y- you had brought up earlier. Um, I didn't quite follow you on the, if you could reitera- reiterate what you were talking about, since we were below the ninety-five percent, uh, participation rate, how the false, um, uh, failures factor in and, and, and what the net-net of that.
So if, if you don't have enough students participating, um, sorry, for example, we have eighty-six percent of our students participate. What, what will happen is basically, um, whatever the number needs to be, uh, it, nine percent adding in of failing, uh, in the failing category. So however that eighty-six percent fell into the performance levels, um, that did not meet category will be increased to the point to where mathematically our numbers are not at eighty-six percent participation anymore, they're at ninety-five percent participation. So what it does is it, it basically says whoever didn't participate, we're going to make the assumption that if they did participate, they would have failed because of the requirement.
Given the extraordinary circumstances of this past year, how fair is that?
Well, um, th- this didn't impact us this year
This year.
because there was no ratings calculated, no scores were taken, and no ratings were given to districts. So the, the ninety-five percent requirement that in prior years would have calcu- would have hurt you and calculated, um, that didn't happen this year. So it's a requirement, but it didn't impact us because nothing was calculated.
So in your fifth slide, when you say accountability twenty-twenty-two,
Yes, sir.
based on the STAR, if it's, takes place this, this year, that will be in effect?
We need to be at ninety-five percent, yes, sir.
We need to be in ninety-five.
We need to meet that requirement.
And, excuse me, this, this brings up, uh, it's a bigger issue, we won't go on a tangent, but it does bring up an important point. The term is like forced failure, uh, and that has been a concept that we have been back and forth with the agency and others about. Uh, not really a system to even explain, it just becomes a forced failure. So if there's a, a situation where there's an issue, there's a reason, there may be extenuating circumstances, it, it yields or defaults to a forced failure, is that right, Dr. Lopez? And, um, it affects your scores and your accountability. So forced failures in any capacity, not just this one, anything, um, is always an, an issue. The other big point that Dr. Lopez has made, but I think it's worth reiterating, is that I think we had about fifteen percent of our students not take the, the STAR overall. And that's an important variable that we can't calculate the effect of that, good or bad, right? Um, so I think just those two, to highlight the forced failures is a, is a real thing. It didn't affect this in terms of what you're seeing, but it will and continue to in accountability systems. And it's, it's a continued, uh, feedback that we've provided, not only our district, but other districts, about, um, how a default, um, to that seems, maybe not just seems, is, is problematic in the sense that accurate scoring, right, accurate data, is either you passed, you didn't pass, you almost passed, but to just force fail is no longer an accurate data piece, right? I mean, it just
Yeah.
becomes a art- artificial may not be the best word, Dr. Lopez is more of a statistician, but, uh, but it just becomes, it, it doesn't seem
It didn't tell you the true picture.
Yeah, yeah, so, but to her point, it's important that we continue to work to ninety-five and not worry about the forced failure. That's the goal, but in the background from, uh, from a, a feedback to the agency and others, it's important for us to continue, not only at our level, board level, et cetera, with legislative agendas and things, uh, to continue to make that point that in any situation where you have a forced default, et cetera, et cetera, um, it, it's just you're losing the accuracy of your data.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, thank you for that explanation, um, Dr. Cavassos. And kind of in line with your slide on, um, accountability twenty-twenty-two, given my previous comments about the extreme disruption that we're seeing across the state and across the nation, with struggles to keep campuses o- open because staff out, and there is dis- um, continuity with instruction going on currently. It sounds like we need to pressure Austin into going above and beyond, uh, just the A, B, and C rating and to forego accountability this year because of the disruptions that we're seeing. Um, that would be my preference.
And, Mr. Will Banks, this, again, not to go on a tangent, and it'll be appropriate also when we do our update on our goals and things, but, and with a very strong public acknowledgement already from agency and others, TA, that attendance is an issue across the state. It's just, it's been disrupted, not only right now, which really is, is obvious, but across the, the fall semester. Uh, and those variables, those factors at some point, to your point, uh, need to be, uh, considered, I think, uh, statewide in terms of, okay, and at the end, when there is an exam, did that have an effect? Does it have an effect? No, it does, because you're missing instruction, but at what level? And so to your point, uh, this is becoming very obvious, especially right now in the fourth, six weeks, when it's publicly acknowledged that, uh, attendance, student, staff, et cetera, for obvious reasons, uh, is a big issue in, in the state, uh, and, and so you, you make a good point.
Yeah, now fortunately, from everything we, we know from this variant, the Omicron variant, that it's come on fast and it's pretty much spread everywhere, and it's expected. And hopefully, um, I think our, uh, uh, Dr. Tenazia with the county has indicated that we think we've peaked and fortunately, and hopefully it'll be as quickly a precipitous drop and we can get back to normality as soon as possible. But right now, it's a huge, um, disruption. Um, so my final comments I want to make is to point out the obvious. And when you look at our results, and we've talked about this in previous board members, what we've seen and what we've expected about this pandemic is that it has disproportionately affected our ECODIS students, our ELL students, our most vulnerable students, our, um, students of color. And we have heavy lifting to do. But there are bright spots, for instance, in special ed on, um, all subjects. The decline was, you know, in terms of the STAR results was only eight percent. Um, um, overall in all subjects, and only down one percent, where, you know, we're seeing double-digit declines in all the other subpops. So there are bright spots, um, but overall, um, you know, uh, unfortunately, these results are less than some of our peers in our category, and, and we do have a lot of work to do, and I don't think we should dwell. We know the scope, we know the work going ahead, but we know it's going to take multiple years. And again, I'll reiterate that we don't expect this overnight, if there's any teachers listening. You know, we know it's tough right now, and we know we've got hard work to do. And we'll do whatever we can to take things off the plate, and we'll continue to push from a board level to help alleviate some of the stress and sys- uh, symptoms or, uh, stress and anxiety that we know our staff is feeling. And with that said, I'll turn it over to my colleagues.
Thank you, Mr. Will Banks, Mrs. McMorrow.
Thank you, Dr. Lopez. I was thinking about the old microphone, you know, okay. Can we go back to the slide with the attendance rates? Thank you, um, and I do apologize if you already specified this, but was this twenty-twenty attendance rate reflective of before the shutdown and virtual instruction came into play, or is this just up until March? Like, wh- when we look at twenty-nineteen versus twenty-twenty and we see, you know, the comparison of attendance rates, how did, how, how did, I guess, the pandemic play a part in that, if at all?
Uh, my understanding is that it's the whole year, but I will confirm
Okay.
and, and report back on that.
Okay, and what, um, what do we think was our, you know, root cause of the attendance rate, um, difference?
We haven't done any analysis on that, so I can't speak, um, to any reasoning that we found for that. Um, Dr. Words, did you have?
Well, I'll just add that, and, and, Dr. Words, you can, if, if, if you want to add to this, but I think what you're seeing in the attendance rate is, um, the spring of twenty-twenty, um, when we shut down, the state did, uh, there was, nobody counted absent.
Right.
So it inflates a little bit. Is that right?
Well
Dr. Words, and you may want to add, address that, but I think that's what's throwing some of these numbers, especially in twenty-twenty.
Yeah.
Uh, with the attendance, but, because it's a whole year, go ahead.
Right, and the other thing to think, think, keep in mind too, is remember when we were trying to capture students' attendance, if you just had a contact with the teacher that ti- in any way,
Right, that, that's
you were counted present, so that even though it wasn't necessarily representative of the fact that a student's t- attendance was taken during the second period at a specific time like normal, there was so much leeway during that period, which allowed us to acknowledge that a student was present, even if there was any interaction, an email, a conversation. So I can't help but believe that there was some impact that way during the March to June kind of moment.
So that's what my main question was, is that, you know, grace, that we kind of, that loose, you know, um, attendance that we had, is that reason for the increase?
And it's, to, to Dr. Lopez's point, it's, it's difficult to pinpoint that as the only reason. The best way we probably could do it is look at what our traditional trends have been year to year to year, and notice if this is the one spike, and I don't know that off the top of my head, but that's the real big difference that happened in twenty-twenty was those last few months.
Right.
It was very much a free-for-all.
Right, and I know that we're in the same boat
Right.
as all districts, but, um, the reason, the reason why I was really curious is because I look at this and I can't help but to think about the implications for this year's attendance rate. And this year is this year, it's not last year or twenty-nineteen. So, um, I, uh, I just, I was curious, um, if you had any insight on this year and how you, you predict that it might be affected, I know that's
Well, it's as Dr. Cavassos indicated, uh, attendance is down. Uh, we actually were looking at it across different schools, even as late as, as early as this week.
Yeah.
Um, I think that some of the challenges is the rules for attendance are specified this year. We take it as, uh, at the, at the recommended specific time period. So the rigidity of how attendance is taken is still being maintained, but the situation is still very much dire, like it has been before. So when you look at our attendance across the board, um, at different schools, it's worse than others, but it's, as Dr. Cavassos indicates, generally down.
And, and we certainly don't want to get tunnel vision with our attendance rate, um, as far as numbers go, because we do not want our students, um, to come to school ill. Um, we definitely have that, that line to tread as well, so, um, thank you for answering those questions.
Thank you, Ms. McMorrow. Um, I don't see any other colleagues with questions. Um, I just have a, a very simple question. On the four-year dropout rate for twenty-nineteen and twenty-twenty for the American Indian population, um, so for twenty-twenty, it says zero, and twenty-nineteen, it had twenty-one point four. Does that, is that because that population is so small, it was just, gotcha?
Yeah, kind of, it's the same, that those wild fluctuations from one year to the next because of your, your small, uh, small numbers.
All right, okay, I don't see any other questions, Dr. Lopez, thank you mu- so much for your presentation.
Thanks, y'all.
Right. I'm not done, thank you. Thank you. So, uh, at this time, we have no registered speakers, so the public hearing on Texas, Mrs. Benjamin, just to confirm, okay, the public hearing on Texas Academic Performance Report is now closed. Okay, next thing on our agenda. Okay, next thing on our agenda is our open forum for agenda items. So as stated on the posted agenda, members of the public who desire to address the board regarding an item on this agenda are required to register at www.aissd.net backslash board meeting speaker request. No later than three P M. the day of the board meeting. Mrs. Benjamin, do we have any requesters registered to address the board regarding agenda items?
Yes, ma'am. We have two speakers registered, one in person and one virtual.
Okay. So this is a routine part of the school board's agenda for regularly scheduled meetings. This segment of the meeting provides citizens with an opportunity to share their views with the trustees on items that are on the agenda tonight. It is not intended to be a discussion or a debate, and trustees will not reply to the speakers. Derogatory comments aimed at an individual will not be tolerated. Personnel matters are not appropriate subjects for open forum, and you will have two minutes to speak. Mrs. Benjamin will notify you when your time is up, and please end your presentation at that time. So our first speaker we have is Cindy Calaluka. Hi.
I missed the hog house at, at Interlochen. I missed it where I didn't see it this year. Was it missing? Good evening, President Mays, Dr. Cavassos, board members, everyone here and at home. Happy New Year. I'm off the cuff. I've, it's no time to prepare anything, but I'm speaking from my heart. I've reversed my order of requests to put them in priority. The kids, I know that's your priority. That's our priority. That's where we need everything. What the kids need is someone dedicated to work with them every day. We need a student interventionist for kinder through two, who can work with students every day. Our budget has four hours a week for our grade level to have a tutor. That divides up to half an hour for my class a week. That's not going to help anybody make any gains. They need somebody who can work with them every day. We have people who have suggested a teaching assistant for each grade level that can work with the students who need it. But they need help, daily help, small class sizes and daily help. Teachers need everything taken off their plates. We don't need any more meetings. We don't need any more trainings. We don't need coaching. We don't need packets and, and videos to watch. We have so much stuff. We have no time to go through it, what we've got, all good sources, that if we had time to look through, would help us in our classrooms. We need all those things taken away so we can work with our students and plan a, plan lessons that meet their needs, see what they do with those lessons, and actually be able to meet them at the next step or go over it again. But because of the trainings and the meetings and all the things, we aren't able to do that.
Thank you, Ms. Calaluka.
Keep it simple, please.
Okay, the next speaker on our agenda is, um, virtual, and that is Maria Astorga. Do we have Maria? Maria, can you hear me?
Hi, yes, I do. Um, I'm sorry, but I have to speak in Spanish because my English is not so good. Can I do it?
You can. Um, do we have someone, though, that can translate?
Sure.
Okay. Dr. Cavassos will translate for you.
I will, and Dr. Wertz will help me if he needs to. Oh, I'm just kidding. I'm not putting in a spot. But he can, though, because I've heard him do it. Okay.
And, um, Ms. Benjamin, can you be, um, gracious on the time since?
So si puede hablar en español si gusta, y yo le voy a dar un, uh, voy a decir lo que usted dice en inglés. Está bien?
Sí, está bien.
We will double her time. That's typically the standard.
Y le va a dar más tiempo para que pueda decir lo que quiera decir, pero también brevemente.
Está bien.
Okay.
Bueno, primero que nada, buenas tardes a todos y gracias por la oportunidad.
So thank you for the opportunity.
Bueno, por lo que estoy aquí es porque quiero pedirles, por favor, que consideren la posibilidad de aprendizaje virtual para los niños.
She would like for, uh, us to consider the opportunity to have virtual instruction for students.
Yo tengo tres niños, los tres tienen una condición médica. La mayor de ellas es más delicada.
She has three children, and one of them has medical conditions.
Ellos, mis hijos habían estado en virtuales. La niña mayor está teniendo, eh, homebound por su salud.
The oldest child has homebound because of her, uh, health situation?
Tengo otros dos niños, uno en tercer grado y uno en prekinder. Esta semana, pues fue la primera semana que fue a la escuela.
This is the first week they've actually attended school. She has one in third grade and one prekinder.
La niña de prekinder regresó con una carta que decía que había estado en contacto con una persona positiva de COVID.
The prekinder student, uh, came back with a note and a letter that says she's been exposed to somebody who had, uh, COVID positive.
Bueno, no quiero poner el riesgo a mis hijos. Su educación es muy importante para mí, pero obviamente su vida es más importante.
She didn't want to put her children at risk. Uh, her, their education is very important, but ultimately their health is, uh, takes priority.
Si esta enfermedad llega a mi casa, mi hija mayor va a morir.
If this, uh, disease, this virus, uh, gets to her house, her oldest child will pass.
Por eso, por mí y por padres como yo, quiero pedirles, por favor, que consideren esta posibilidad, por lo menos para niños como mis hijos que tienen alguna condición médica.
They would like, uh, for us, the district, to consider, uh, virtual options for her younger children, uh, especially if they have a condition, a family member with a condition, a health condition as such.
Ahora mismo, mis dos hijas, la, la mayor y la niña de prekinder, pues están en cuarentena por orden médica.
Yeah, so, uh, right now, prekinder and third grade child, this is, and they're under quarantine, uh, by, by, um, medical professional.
Bueno, no, es la de tercer grado. Ella está en el grado ocho, pero es la que está teniendo homebound. Es la niña que tiene la condición más delicada. Tiene problemas de corazón, pulmones y sangre.
Her oldest, eighth grader, has the health conditions, that's who has the health conditions at home, uh, lung, heart, and, uh, blood health condition.
Y como madre, mis hijos son muy importantes para mí y su salud es muy importante. Obviamente, no quiero perder uno de mis hijos.
As a mother, their health is very important. It's a priority for her, and she, uh, does not want to lose any of her children.
Y es por eso, por mis hijos y por los hijos de otras personas que tal vez tienen una condición de salud también importante. Es por eso que quiero pedirles, por favor, que consideren la oportunidad de educación virtual para niños con condiciones médicas.
And it's for her children and other children with compromised health situations that she is asking for, uh, district consideration of virtual options. Okay. Yeah, termino?
Sí, bueno, ese, ese es el punto que yo quería tratar solamente. Eso, pedirles, por favor, que ayuden a salvar a niños que pueden morir por este COVID.
She wants, she wants to thank, um, the board for, uh, their attention and listening for, uh, this, this virtual option possibility to save children like hers, uh, across the district. Muchas gracias. Lo agradecemos. Thank you very much. We really appreciate you.
Thank you.
Gracias.
Okay, those are all the registered speakers that we have for this evening. So next on our agenda are our action items. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Mays. And, uh, tonight we bring action item A for consider of the order of election for the school board for your consideration.
Mrs. Fowler?
Thank you, President Mays. I move that the board call a general election to be held on Saturday, May seventh, twenty-twenty-two, for the purpose of electing members to the Board of Trustees of the Arlington Independent School District to fill place numbers four and five.
Thank you, Mrs. Fowler. Do I have a second?
I second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mrs. Fowler, a second by Mr. Will Banks. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. All present vote on the affirmative. Thank you very much. So a general election is hereby ordered to be held Saturday, May seventh, twenty-twenty-two, for the purpose of electing members to the Board of Trustees of the Arlington Independent School District to fill place numbers four and five. The main early voting polling site for all voters residing in Arlington Independent School District, including the portion of the district that lies within the city of Arlington, the city of Dow Worthington Gardens, the Tarrant County portion of Grand Prairie, and the town of Pantigo, will be the following location. Tarrant County Election Center, twenty-seven-hundred Premier Street, Fort Worth, Texas, seven-six-one-one-one, phone number eight-one-seven-three-eight-three-one-eight-six-eight-three. Between the hours of eight A M. and five P M. Monday through Friday, beginning April twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-two, through April twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-two, between the hours of seven A M. and seven P M. on Saturday, April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two, between the hours of eleven A M. and four P M. on Sunday, May first, twenty-twenty-two, and between the hours of seven A M. and seven P M. on Monday and Tuesday, May second and May third, twenty-twenty-two. Applications for a ballot by mail for voters residing in the Arlington Independent School District shall be mailed to early voting clerk, P O Box nine-six-one-zero-one-one, Fort Worth, Texas, seven-six-one-six-one-zero-zero-one-one, fax number eight-one-seven-eight-five-zero-two-three-four-four, or an email transmission of a completed scanned application for a ballot by mail containing an original signature can be emailed to votebymail@terrentcounty.com. Note, effective December first, twenty-seventeen. If an application for ballot by mail is submitted by fax or email, the original application must also be mailed and received by the early voting clerk no later than the fourth business day after receipt of the faxed or emailed copy. Applications for a ballot by mail must be received no later than the close of business on Tuesday, April twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-two. The order of election may be amended at a later date to include early voting sites added or deleted due to joint elections with other political divisions. This order of election is issued this thirteenth day of January, twenty-twenty-two. Okay. Our next action item is consider adoption of local innovative plan for district, District of Innovation designation. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Mays. And this evening, we bring back for your consideration. We've have, we started a process with your approval, and we bring now for your consideration the adoption of the local, uh, District of Innovation designation. And as a reminder, we have a District of Innovation, uh, plan that had been approved, but it is expiring and we need to, uh, now, uh, approve it again. The board needs to consider and approve it again if we wish to continue it. Dr. Wertz has led the process for that, so Dr. Wertz.
All right. Good evening, President Mays, members of the board. Dr. Cavassos, Happy New Year. It's nice to see everybody. Um, I'm back. As Dr. Cavassos indicated, I'll share with you a little bit about the process we went through to draft our new revised local innovation plan, provide a little bit of background, and then share a little bit about what's the content of that plan. So as he indicated earlier, we currently do have a local innovation plan already in place. It is set to expire on February sixteenth, two thousand, oh, well, February sixteenth of twenty-twenty-two, uh, which is exactly five years from its adoption date. Uh, what is a District of Innovation? So just as a reference point for those who may be listening for the first time, this was passed into law, um, during the eighty-fourth legislative session by House Bill eighteen forty-two. And what that bill did is it created the Texas Education Code, Chapter twelve, twelve A, which provided traditional school districts opportunities to access flexibilities that were normally reserved for those that were charter schools. Um, it is a plan that must be adopted by the school board, and it is, um, renewable every five years. So why would we consider remaining what is called our designation of District of Innovation? Well, one, it allows for an enhancement of local control, and it also gives us the opportunity to provide and ensure that there are meaningful program options for students that may be limited should some of these measures not be put in place. So what are some of the exemptions that could be potentially considered? This is a list that you see in front of you of, of a few. It's not exhaustive, exhaustive, of, uh, several of the exemptions that a district could consider. In Arlington I S D., we do not consider all these, or we, we technically don't, um, we have not recommended we bring them forward. Some of them involve like teacher contracts and things like that, because, as you know, there are some of those provisions available with charter schools. We choose to maintain some of those things at the system level. However, to be eligible to be, uh, a district of innovation with a local innovation plan, there are a couple of requirements. One is you have to maintain an academic and financial rating of what's considered acceptable, and also you have to physically adopt the plan, um, as it's outlined, using the process that's in the statute. If a plan is adopted, um, it needs to identify specifically which portions of the Texas Education Code that you're seeking an exemption from and provide, uh, an assurance that there's a comprehension, a comprehensive educational program with, with innovations that include a variety of those things that you see in front of you, and many of them, um, you'll notice are addressed. Some other things to consider is that once a plan is put in place, it can be amended, it can be rescinded or renewed by a majority vote. Um, you're only permitted to have one local innovation plan, um, intact at a time. If you choose to adopt, um, innovations that require policy change, you, that, because you're actually, uh, asking for exemptions from legal statutes, uh, it may require you to go back to board policy to adjust some of your adopted board policies if you, if, if one of them happened to be in the plan that's being recommended or adopted. And then finally, if the district receives, um, an unacceptable academic or financial rating for two consecutive years, you lose your eligibility and TA may terminate the plan if they choose. So this is kind of the, uh, a brief, uh, slide that just shows the big picture about the way we tried to strategically think about how to leverage the opportunity that just a local innovation plan could give us. The first thing that we considered was there's a strategic plan that the board was considering, um, in the same semester where we were looking at the possibility of a new local innovation plan. And what we wanted to do is make sure that as those strategies were being considered, um, that the, the subcommittee that was working on the local innovation plan, um, that they thought about that strategic plan and identified opportunities to accelerate that work, um, not necessarily do something different, but use the plan or to accelerate it. We also then, um, studied the, the code and all the exemptions that are, that are available or listed to identify are there opportunities, um, if exemptions were applied, to accelerate that work, and then go ahead and start the process of developing the plan. If you were to go online in the past and look at our, our past plan, there were six made, six, uh, six exemptions that were, uh, embedded in that plan. Many of them that you're going to see roll forward into the new plan, and I'll explain to you why that's the case. We had several members, um, that participated in our committee. This is the list of participants. It ranged from, um, community members to, um, teachers, to principals, to district staff. We tried to create a wide range of people within our stakeholder groups to, um, provide, um, their input to the process. So what was our process? The first thing we did is we tried to understand, um, and orient ourselves to what District of Innovation designation was and what the process and requirements were needed to actually obtain that designation. Because we assembled, uh, the committee that, um, that you asked us to, uh, based on the recommendation, some people, that was their first experience actually diving into what a district innovation was. So, uh, as the person kind of, um, facilitating that process, it was important to make sure that everybody at least had an equal playing field and an understanding about what it was so that they could engage equally in the work. The next thing we did is we made meaning. So we tried to gain an understanding of the, of the last local innovation plan and the exemptions that were concluded. Why were they there? What, how was it typically used over the last five years? And then the last thing, uh, we did was what I mentioned on the onset, which is really try to think how we could do strategic alignment between the strategic plan that was getting ready to be recommended and also these priorities that the district tries to do on a day-to-day basis. The interesting thing about, um, about, uh, the local innovation plan is it's not just about accelerating work. It's also about reflecting and saying, hey, we have an opportunity for exemptions. It's when we do our, think about our day-to-day work, is there anything that could be just made easier if we just were exempt from certain statutes? And so we considered that as well. So the, when we think about the strategic plan, um, there were four major, um, strategies or priorities that came forth in the strategic plan. I know they're labeled all one-one-one, which is very interesting, because it doesn't, neither one is prioritized more than the other, but they're all listed there. And what we did is we looked at these specific strategies to try to figure out what were the...what was the actual priority that the strategic plan was articulating? And then specifically, what was the result that was supposed to be generated from that priority? So, we started at a high level, and then we moved into the individual action plans as a committee. So, for example, if the first strategy that was articulated in the strategic plan was prioritizing high-quality personalized learning experience, under that strategy were specific results, several of them which you know have been adopted in the strategic plan. So, what the committee did is they looked at those, and then as they considered each of those specific results, we went through a process where we considered the statutes, which you'll see them on the slide on the left-hand side. That's just a screenshot of a variety of the ones that you could potentially get exempted from. And then we went through like a protocol where we analyzed those potential statutes that we could apply for an exemption from aligned to the specific result. So, if you'll notice on the right-hand side, the specific result was articulated. We tried to understand what the general themes of that were, and then we looked at the statutes to see, are there any potential statutes that could actually impact that specific result connected to that strategy? So, we tried to be very linear in trying to match things up and think about it, rather than just trying to think of any strategy or any exemption and just go for it. We really wanted to make sure it was designed to accelerate the work that you were getting ready to adopt. And then, as I mentioned earlier, we did pause as a team and ask ourselves, and that was one of the committee's homework assignments, is to go back and just reflect on your own day-to-day work, because the stakeholder group is very diverse, and say, if you could just get an exemption from anything, would it help at all? And just consider whether those things actually were part of...would be some things we could bring in the plan or not. So, finally, we went through all this process, and we brought it all together. And this is...these are the big ways we did. As I mentioned, we thought, what's the big idea we're trying to accomplish? Which portion of the statute would we want to seek an exemption from? How would that exemption help us with the innovations we're trying to implement here in the system? And then, any other things we would need to consider as you're implementing those things on a day-to-day basis. So, this is just a quick slide that just kind of outlines some of the pictures of people that participated in our work. And then, we analyzed, as I mentioned, the plan, and we worked through those four steps. So, this is a screenshot of the plan that was posted on our website on, I believe, December 2nd. That's part of the rules. Once the plan is initially drafted, then we went to the DIDC, presented it to the DIDC, asked for a vote. It was unanimously voted for. At that evening, after that vote took place, we sent a letter to the Commissioner of Education indicating our desire to present this plan to the board, and we posted it for 30 days, as required by statute, on the website. It's actually been up there longer than 30 days in preparation for your view of that plan tonight. So, what I'm going to do now is I'm going to walk through each of the innovations or the exemptions that we're recommending, we consider. You will see that some of them are redundant, meaning they're just being carried over from the past, which was very much part of our discussion, which I'll talk about as we're kind of going. So, the first one is teacher certification. And really, this is not, for anybody listening, a desire to stop doing teacher certifications. We're not recommending that at all. In fact, if TEA actually has a certification on file that a teacher would be required to get, we actually still want to continue with that process. We find value in that. But, there are some programs where teacher certs are not available through TEA. We have some CTE programs. We have some language programs where they don't offer certifications. So, we want to apply this certification, this exemption as an opportunity to locally certify people. The other thing about this, too, is we have an opportunity to increase our candidate pool, and I'll just use one quick example. If you are a teacher, if you are a person who wants to enter in the CTE field, and you started the process of certifying in your 20s, and you didn't pass the test in the 20s in your 20s, and you went off into the workforce, and you worked and did whatever it is that you were doing, and now you've gained a skill set, that now you want to come and actually teach like a career tech course here in the district. If you started the process of examination for a cert in the state of Texas, and you failed one time, you cannot...you cannot get... you cannot be exempted from the certification process. TA requires that you go through it, even if we would normally be able to take you and locally certify you like we would other people because of your workforce experience. By applying this exemption, we would allow ourselves not to have to go through that process and give our candidate pool the opportunity to grow, so that people who have expertise in career tech kind of programming, who may have initiated the process of a certification in their youth, who are...to not have to necessarily go through that whole process all over again, we can actually do it now locally. The other one is minimum attendance for class credit or final grade. So, this is a very interesting one, because there is a statute that basically says that you can pass when you get seat time. And we...this is actually a challenge, because it prevents students to enroll, especially in our early college high schools, for example, from enrolling in courses that are based on interest and need. And so, if we receive an exemption here, it mitigates this seat time requirement and allows them to optimize their course load. It also reduces the need for credit recovery and remediation and acceleration, and we can award credit based on content mastery. So, I'll give you another example. If I'm a student that goes to school, I could have an A in the class. But, if my attendance caused me to miss more than that 90% rule, I have to come and do seat time. Otherwise, I can't get awarded credit. If you're in the university or college, and you could demonstrate that you understood the content and the mastery of the content, and you missed class, our concern is, do you know the content? And so, what we want to do is try to find opportunities to provide students with the chance to earn credit based upon what we know they know, and not just for the fact of whether they sat in school or not. What's important to note about this is that we're not trying to mitigate this idea of absenteeism. We're not encouraging kids to miss class to earn credit. What we're simply saying is there are some courses that actually don't meet seat time requirements that kids take in post-secondary institutions. They have mini-masters, and they can earn course credit really, really quickly. We want to provide those opportunities to students, and they can get it if they actually can be receiving credit based on what they know and mastery, rather than just coming to class and sitting. First day of instruction is one we've had in the past before. This allows us to have flexibility in our school calendar. As you know, the statute requires that school districts to start school no earlier than the Fourth Monday of the month of August. This allows us to start our actual first semester earlier and balance out the number of days that are in the two semesters, because one is naturally much shorter than the other if you don't do that. Last day of instruction is actually for our early college high schools. This would allow us to adopt a schedule where students can get out of class before May 15th, if needed. So, our students at our early college high schools are now currently living within the calendar of TCC. Their Christmas or winter break is totally different than the rest of the districts. And also, they finish at the end of the year at different times, too, which allow them to participate in those mini-masters that we were talking about. Our continued exemption around this statute makes that feasible for that group. This is actually one carried forward, too, as well. It's a financial one, which basically allows the school district the opportunity to consider going beyond a two-year term... a two-year term contract that they have with a depository bank. So, if the district...normally, the statute says that your contract cannot exceed a two-year time period with a depository bank. If, for some reason, you feel...if the district feels that it's actually receiving the services that it needs, it can request that bank to submit a plan or proposal for us to extend their contract, and we can actually bring it for another two years based on this statute. And then finally, minutes...minimum minutes of instruction. We have pre-K 3 in our district, and pre-K 3 is a half-day program. And if you want to maintain a half-day program within the calendar times that we have and still honor that teachers receive their duty-free lunch and their planning period as prescribed for the rest of the district, you have to...you have to apply for this exemption, which allows us to have some flexibility around the total number of minutes for the school year, because there are days that are actually a little bit shorter, because it is a half-day. And when you add all those other two components in there with the teacher's lunch and their planning period, you wouldn't meet the minimum requirement. So, this allows us to still continue with our pre-K 3 program, but allow teachers to have their same duty-free and teacher-planning periods that the rest of the district gets. So, this is just a slide articulating what our process has been and the proposed timeline. As you can see here, we are now at January 13th, where we are presenting this to you. If the board chooses to approve this plan, it will go into effect immediately, and it has to be done by a two-thirds majority vote. And so, we are recommending that the Board of Trustees approve the plan as it's been presented.
Thank you very much, Dr. Wertz.
You're welcome.
Do I have any trustees with any questions? Yes, Mrs. McMura? Sorry. Do it again. Gotcha.
Thank you, Dr. Wertz. Quick question. Can we go back to the slide about the teacher certification?
Yes.
So, we talked about the need for providing professionals to teach our specialty courses, which we offer a lot of. But, I want to clarify something. For the teachers that teach our core academic subjects, not necessarily the specialty areas, would...they would eventually need to reach highly qualified through ESPEC status, right? To remain employed with us?
Yes. In fact, this...that's...and I'm glad you're asking this question, so we can reiterate it for anybody that's listening. This is not intended, and we have no intention as a district to abandon certification requirements that ESPEC has for teachers, and specifically what you're asking around four subject areas. This is simply, how do we...how do we create an increased candidate pool so that specialty courses where certs are not even offered at the state level can be offered here? And I'll give you an example, one that we do already. At Wimbush Elementary, we have a French dual-language program. And there is not a French dual-language certificate at the state level. So, what we do is we do a dual kind of scenario, where they have a low French certificate, and we require our teachers to obtain that portion of the normal certification process, but the dual portion, we certify on our side. So, it's a way of marrying some things. If there is a component of the certification requirement for a position that we feel like we can leverage at the state level in combination with our own work, we'll do that. If it's completely void, like remember, we used to do...we do do this. Instrument repair, that's locally certified. We...there is no such thing at the state level. We create it here at our level, and this allows us to do it.
That makes a lot of sense. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McMura. Mr. Will Banks?
Thank you, President Mays. And if there are no other comments, I'm prepared to make a motion to approve the plan. And I...before that, I would like to say, I agree with this wholeheartedly. This gives us the flexibility we need, given our first strategy and our strategic plan to meet every student where they are, provide highly tailored instructional plans for every student. So, with that, I move the board to approve the local innovation plan as presented tonight.
Do I have a second?
Second.
So, I've got a motion by Mr. Will Banks, a second by Mrs. McMura. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Wertz. Next on our agenda is our discussion action items. Our first item is consider the board handbook. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Mays. Annually, we bring the board handbook for any revisions. This actually goes through the Governance Committee, and that has been sent out, and they've been working on that. And this is an opportunity to either provide any feedback or just considerations. So, I'll ask Mr. Chapa, who's the Chair of the Governance Committee, if he wants to make any comments.
I'm good. Thank you. Thank you, President Mays. No real update beyond what Dr. Cavassos said. We have reviewed this in Governance Committee. We are looking at some edits. Ms. McMura has submitted some, and we're just... we have been, over several years, continuing to tweak this handbook. It certainly looks a lot better. It is more streamlined than it was a few years ago. Our process with presenting the handbook has traditionally been to bring it up for discussion at one meeting after dissemination to the board, and then to go back, finalize, and then bring it forward at the next meeting for a final vote. And so, this is the first of those meetings. So, be happy to hear any feedback on the handbook. And if there's none tonight, happy to take hand edits or Word version edits or any sticky notes, whatever you would like to send with your thoughts regarding the board handbook. The Governance Committee would be happy to review those, and we'll be bringing this back again at the next meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chapa. Mr. Hogg?
Thank you, President Mays, and thank you, Mr. Chapa, in Governance Committee. I did mine in crayon, if that's okay. Come on, Mr. Chapa. So, with that, I do have some tweaks and changes. Most of them, Mr. Chapa, are just small little words here and there. Couple of things, you know, like... if...yeah, I don't need to go through all of them, but just to give you an idea of a couple of them. But, you know, some of our comments to public, we're usually doing three minutes, five minutes. We need to allow our president to do that. We talked about open form cars. We've gone electronic. We need to make sure we update that on some of those. Some of the items on consent agenda, as we've had changes, we...I think we're limiting a little bit on what we can say we can put on there, and we, as a board, are kind of tweaking that. Communications, if I get information from the superintendent by fax, I'm in trouble. And if I'm expected to send it by fax, we're all in trouble, because I don't think I know how to...I could go one place to go to the center, the mail center, and maybe have a fax on there. So, just tweak some of those. And then, the last thing I add, Mr. Chapa, that we may want to think about, and maybe it's just a link to something on our website. But, you know, as the focus has become on student achievement and HB3 and how we're reviewing those, I think it's probably a good idea in the board handbook to maybe have a link to our website, or potentially the calendar showing what we're planning to review. And maybe it's just a link. Maybe it's that calendar that's listed in there. But, I think showing something like that's probably beneficial to folks. But, I will pass over some of my edits. And overall, I think we have a strong board handbook, updating it as soon as possible and keeping it going, and making sure we stay up to date on the calendar is always a critical factor. But, thank you guys for the work.
Thank you, Mr. Hogg. Mr. Will Banks?
I just want to reiterate, I concur with my colleague, Mr. Hogg, on a lot of those changes. Number one, the fax after watching Ted Lasso recently with my wife and the struggles Ted Lasso had sending his divorce papers by fax. Yeah, we need to remove that. A big Ted Lasso fan, if you can't tell. The other thing that I think is very important is, I think it's adamant, I would be a little more stronger than you, Mr. Hogg, that our HB3 goal monitoring calendar is such important and is a huge part of our work and focus, that it needs to be included in the board handbook. Kind of the general highlights of what we hit each board meeting in terms of monitoring those goals. So, with that said, great job. You've done a miracle in making...I can't believe you let... my pictures didn't get edited out to make it look more attractive, but somehow you left them in there. But, I guess I won't complain. So, yeah. Yeah, maybe improve it by removing those pictures out and putting more of Ms. Mays in, in my place. That would probably make it look a little better. So, with that, I would like...well, it looks good. I don't know if we're moving to adopt it, or this is...
No, I think the Chair said...yeah.
All right.
Thank you very much, Mr. Will Banks. I just want to thank, again, our board chair, Mr. Chapa, and Melody, and Melody Fowler, and Sarah McMura for working on the handbook, and very excited to see any additional revisions and have an opportunity to vote on all the hard work you've done. Thank you. Okay, next discussion action item, COVID-19 school operations update. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Mays. And tonight, as we have for a number of meetings, we bring a COVID-19 school operations update. And there are some new things to report as this pandemic continues to change and add different challenges. So, Dr. Hill will lead us through the COVID-19 school operations update. Dr. Hill?
Thank you, Dr. Cavassos. President Mays, board members, and good evening, and thank you for this opportunity to give another update on the COVID-19. We've got a brief presentation here, and then we'll entertain some discussions. But, just an overview first, and we'll be discussing just vaccine testing and other mitigation efforts. We'll look at some revised TEA slash CDC guidelines for isolation periods. We'll look at some county-wide conditions. look at some countywide conditions, look at the AISD dashboard, and some of our weekly trends, and then some COVID campus supports that we're providing to the campuses by way of human resources and some reduced workload, if you will. Just so, vaccine, vaccine efforts, again, the Arlington Fire Department still has their vaccine site up at 2920 South Cooper, and we want to continue to push people to that location that they're interested in the vaccine and/or the boosters. Testing mitigation, we have relocated our AISD testing clinic to 1203 West Pioneer Parkway, and we're there Monday through Friday, 6 to 2:00 p.m., and Tuesday, Thursday, from noon to 7:00. We'll report that we will likely be closing that temporarily until we can get more testing, and we actually ran out of tests today, and that clinic closed about 7:10 tonight, and we were able to get all those that were in line to test today, but we're actually out of tests, and we've got another order in place already. We were partnering with Tarrant County and a third-party vendor to stand up a site at our athletic arena, we're scheduled to start that on Monday, we'll go Monday through Saturday from 6:00 until 3:00, 6:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., or maybe it's 7:00 to 3:00, I believe, but on this coming Monday, we'll start at noon, but beyond that, we'll start at 7:00. And then because of some events that we may have scheduled at the arena, we'll have some blackout dates, and we'll communicate those through the third-party vendor in the county well in advance. Just some test data from our testing center, and this is through the end of the day on yesterday, we've tested over 2,400, or administered over 2,400 tests, and 794 have come back positive, which is a positivity rate of right at 32.7%. It's kind of in line, very high with, with what's going on in the county, the county may be a little bit higher than ours. So other mitigation factors, we're continuing to strongly encourage a mask, and continue to require symptomatic individuals to stay at home, don't come to school, don't come to work, and to get tested as soon as possible. Just the revised CDC slash TEA guidelines for public health, and it's basically the staff who have tested positive for COVID-19, there's an option for them to reduce their isolation period to, from 10 days to five days since the symptom onset, if they are fever, if their symptoms are improving, and they've been fever-free without fever-reducing medication for at least 24 hours. Again, this is in line with what the CDC has recommended, and we've got guidance from TEA as well. Some Tarrant County statistics, this is, again, straight from the county website, the community spread is back at high now, and you can see the seven-day average as of January 8th was at 39%. The virus spread as of January 8th is increasing as well, and you can see all of those indicators are increasing from that dashboard, and this is, again, consistent within the district as well as with the county. Just through Wednesday, January 12th, in the district, we've had over 5,900 positive cases, 1,186 have been staff members, over 4,600 students, and 11 visitors, and again, this is on the district's dashboard, dashboard, and it's updated. We say about 5:00 p.m. daily, we really try to get there, but the nurses at the campus who are responsible for this, they're slammed right now, and so sometimes it's a little bit later than that, but we get it updated daily. And this is here, our weekly trends, you can see where we started back, we're actually, because this spreadsheet is getting so long, we're actually taking off a week every time we add another week, just to kind of make the data not so cumbersome. But you can see the spike, and again, this is within the district, and it's consistent with what's going on in the county as well. You can see it's reported only for, for four days this week, because tomorrow's not on there yet, and it was the same make for last week. And the COVID support that we've been providing, the substitute office and human resources are working diligently to try to provide as many substitute teachers as possible, it's been a challenge, but they're working to try to enhance that. We are, the principals are reassigning non-teaching staff at the campus, and for example, instructional coaches, and interventions, interventionists, and et cetera, assigning those positions to fill classroom roles when teachers are out for various reasons. And then we've also created through the help, or the guidance of office of school leadership, the central office helping hands, and that's basically redeploying staff from central office out into the buildings to provide classroom coverage for, for teachers that are out, and so it's a challenge, we're all, just all hands on deck, basically. We've also included or implemented a, what we call a January pause, and that's just some of the things that we've had planned and scheduled that would impact the teacher in some sort of way, we're kind of pausing that during the month of January, and then we will kind of reassess how the cases are going, and then maybe extend it, or potentially just make a decision at that point. Pausing instructional learning days, the engaged-to-learning sessions, moving those coaching sessions into actual classroom visits, pausing all external and in-house active learning cycle coaching, and you can see the list, I don't want to read that and bore you, but that's kind of what the January pause includes. So our next steps, we'll continue to monitor the staff and the ability to effectively cover classrooms by school, and if necessary, we would consider closing a grade level or potentially the impacted school as, as the conditions warrant, so. Constant eye on it, and constant communication with principals and others about what we can do to, to assist, and so that's the update at this point, we'll be glad to have any discussions or questions.
Thank you very much, Dr. Hill. Do I have any trustees with questions? Mr. Chapa?
Thank you, President Mays, Dr. Hill, and also Dr. Cavassos, are there any plans to provide some sort of virtual option for individuals like we heard from earlier tonight who have a medical reason or some other severe concern with their children attending school?
So, without getting into any specific cases, I'm speaking now in generalities, we do have homebound services, and students can apply and become eligible to, to receive homebound services. Just for clarity, if there's a quarantine situation, a parent wants to quarantine their child because they've been exposed or otherwise, we do provide the makeup work, and that is a very effective way to make sure that they don't fall behind, there's a lot of communication, so it, I know it sounds at the extreme that when you come back, you'll get your makeup work, but what is actually happening in many practices is they send them the work, and it's more of a, of a during the time they're out. But that, those options are, are available, and they're used, those are the tools we have right now to, to provide instruction when somebody's out for quarantine, but if there's somebody with a health reason, a student with a health reason, by all means, we want them to apply for homebound services, because that's a very effective way, and outside of a pandemic, homebound services is very effective as well, so it's a service that we must provide, and, but we do make a lot of use of it.
So we are, we are not, at this time, contemplating reinstituting a virtual option like we did in the first semester for additional few weeks, or six weeks, or anything like that?
That's correct, we are not at this time, and, and I'll give you a little rationale behind that, without getting too mired in detail, but the, probably the biggest rationale would be our staffing challenges, to reorganize staff, it was already a challenge to provide virtual when, when the spike wasn't there, with the spike and the gaps and the challenges with staff and all that, we probably would struggle to do both very well, both virtual and in, in class, it's just the staff availability is very limited, because it took a large number of staff to stand up virtual to begin before the spike. And then the other is, is we want to make sure that we're mindful that, again, things can change, but there is a plateau that seems to be happening, and predictions even by the county is that by the end of January, things will get better, so we don't want to keep disrupting that virtual and things that we probably can't do very effective right now anyway because of staff.
Okay, and speaking of the, you know, Dr. Hill, you said all hands are on deck, and you're mentioning the, the coverage gaps, and we, you know, we've heard from quite a few folks that that's pretty severe need on some of their campuses, what is the rubric? Do we, I know we probably don't have a formal rubric, but what's the threshold at which we make a decision to, you know, shut down a grade, shut down a, a building? I know in our district, our size and in different parts of the district are, you know, affected maybe differently than, than others, it's, it's unlikely to do a district closure is my, is my guess what you're thinking is, but what's the threshold short of that?
So it's, it's an art and a science, and I'm going to let the artist and scientist, maybe, the person who actually gathers this information, and, and actually recommends to me when it's time, I'll tell you, it's, it's, it may sound clear-cut, but it's not, I'll just preempt a little bit, there's a lot of overlap, so when people are out because they've tested positive, they're going to come back at a certain point, and then others are out, so it's during those overlap periods where we have a large number out, but in a couple of days, the ones that were out, you know, 10 days ago will be coming back and things like that, so Dr. Brown, give us some insight into the, the work that I know the assistant superintendents and EDs do with principals, to get to ultimately a very quick recommendation to me about that.
Absolutely, art and science, it's quite a combination when it comes to COVID. What I'll say is first, I want to just, you know, thank the, the staff at the schools, 76 schools, and, and we've not had to make any kind of closures until, of course, a small one today, but the reality is, what they're focusing on as a campus is assessing every single day the number of staff members who they have out, and where they might be able to pull to get coverage on campus. We also have our helping hands that sometimes we're having to pull from other campuses to a severe campus, and so the principals are working in concert with the EDs, and identifying how long people will be out because of COVID, when they're coming back, who I might be able to push into different classrooms, where I might be able to combine classes, and so they've done masterfully in the last week and a half of really being able to try to make sure we have coverage in every single classroom, and so it's the principals working in concert with the ED, and then we get together, we make the, we, we assess kind of the, the landscape and determine if it's in the best interest of students because of safety and otherwise for us to make a decision to close a grade level, which is our, our first, you know, run at it, is trying to do a grade level versus a school.
And so I know, you know, this is, our experience with the virus has ebbed and flowed over the last two years, and, you know, we very much hope, we wouldn't be talking about this this time of year, but we're in this situation, and there's a really severe spike right now, the, the data on whether or not this is as severe as prior variants, I think, is, is coming out the direction of it's less severe, but it's, the spread is, is much larger. When we have those, so the more people get it, and we, staff are going to be out at least five days under the new guidance, students are still out 10 days, I think a concern I have is during those periods where we're having a couple days of, or weeks of overlap, where we're really having to pull people around, you know, you, we're talking about coverage, it doesn't mean that the students are getting instruction, and so what is your sense of, of how, what's the magnitude of that problem? I mean, are we experiencing, are we functionally open but effectively not providing instruction in many instances, and if so, what's, what is your sense of how much of a problem that is?
Yeah, I would say we're not there yet, Trustee Chapa, we still have certified teachers going into classrooms, there are some cases where we have a paraprofessional helping support, but in general, if you're pulling a testing facilitator, even our specialists from central office are all certified teachers, so the expectation is, is that we're still trying to deliver high-quality instruction as best we can with the fluid, fluidity of what's happening in and out of the classroom. So right now, if you're asking, is it kind of like a babysitting, or we just have a warm body there, we are not there, the expectation is, is we still have the best instruction as possible for our students.
Okay, and are we providing any sort of additional compensation to the folks who are having to do extra coverage or combine classes, or anything like that?
Yes, we are, we've updated that, we've updated that and provide a little bit more starting in the fall, and so our paraprofessionals now receive extra, I think it's up to $25 now an hour for covering a classroom, even teachers who have to take in extra students, or teachers who use their planning period to cover a classroom, if that's a choice they make, they do get compensated for that as well, and so we wanted to make sure providing that is a little, it's not, you know, it's a little nudge to say, we appreciate it, we know it's an inconvenience, but we certainly want to compensate you as best we can.
Okay, what about like librarians, so those, and I've heard of some of, some librarians being used for that purpose, do they qualify for that as well?
So we...
So on, we are making sure to assess, and we had a conversation with HR even today, to make sure that we assess, and how much can we expand the payment for taking classes, because we have librarians, GT teachers, dyslexia teachers, others that are, again, also being pulled to, to do what Dr. Brown has described, which is not just fill in, but to provide some instruction, right? So that's our ideal. The other thing that I think is important is that this has a relationship with student attendance, so why we're not at that point to a large scale in many places is because student attendance is down too, so you have fewer students, fewer staff, but you still have to make a match there, so it's not like in some of these schools that we have high student attendance and low teacher availability, because I think they're proportional, so that's why that we can still manage and provide the expectation of instruction. But, but yes, so librarians, GT teachers, dyslexia teachers, individuals like that, we're assessing to make sure that they're eligible as well for, for payment if they haven't been receiving, which we think they have, but we're making sure.
Okay.
And Trustee Chapa, I may have not said the right number, so I'll make sure that we get the right information to you as relates to the compensation for the extra coverage.
Okay, no, I'd appreciate that.
Yep.
Another, so I, we know there's new TEA CDC guidance with respect to staff, is it still, I was assuming it's still 10 days for students, and that that's going to change in the near, possibly change in the near future, right?
Well, so last Friday, this past Friday, the Texas Education Agency changed the staff availability or, or ability to come back, you know, under certain conditions that Dr. Hill covered, but they have not adjusted the student, and last Friday, they indicated, the agency, TEA, indicated that they would be working on this and try to do the same for students, just to be simple, and we had a call today, and that has not been done, and it was less optimistic from TEA that they were going to do that for students.
Okay.
Doesn't mean it's ruled out, because they changed their mind, as if you've noticed, the TEA changes their mind, but it was less optimistic for immediate change to that, and I think our next call is scheduled for two weeks.
Okay, so a question that, that I think comes from that is, is if we have students who are out for 10 days, you know, that's a, as you get, your student gets older, you know, that could, that adds up to a substantial amount of makeup work, and they're, but they're also not in the classroom, so in that, I think it makes that even that much harder to catch up on the makeup work, I would expect for, you know, especially junior high and high school students who might be in more advanced classes or whatnot, they, you know, that the potential for falling behind, I think, is a, is a real one there, and, and students are probably, and parents are probably worried about that, is there any way, or is it been considered at all, that on a case-by-case basis, maybe with an individual teacher, if there's a student who's home, because some of the students, just like the adults, they might be better in, in four or five days, and, and be feeling well enough to be up to doing it, is there a way for them to maybe work out a situation individually with the teacher to say, hey, can, you know, can you pop up a Chromebook and, and set up a Zoom, and I can just at least listen in, and they don't fall as far behind? Is that something that we could consider doing?
Yeah, we can certainly, we can certainly have a conversation about that, it probably would be more case-by-case, as you mentioned, Trustee Chapa, depending on if the staff member is in the classroom, and just making sure they have all the resources they need available, especially if the kid is at home. What we've said now is, we, we allow the same number of days that you were absent, you have that many days to makeup work, however, if there are extenuating circumstances, extended illness or things like that, we can certainly work with the students on an individual basis.
And, and I want to make, make sure that, for clarity as well, that these, so outside of pandemic, let's just set that aside for a minute, these interactions happen, teachers interact with students when they're out, when they're going to be out for a period of time, there's a lot of interaction with, with the teachers and students. During pandemic, there's also that interaction, so it's not like we're not going to talk to you until 10 days when you come back, there's a lot of interaction. It is challenging, absolutely, to be trying to do your own makeup work, but there is interaction, there is calls and things that teachers have always done with students who are out, and now it's no different. I will say that sometimes the teachers are out as well because of this, and so there is nobody that can connect right away with the students, but that's a common interaction that happens with teachers and students when they're out.
Right, and I think my question stems mainly from the fact that when we, you know, in non-pandemic times, when we don't have these strictures in place, it, it's the rare case where a student is going to be out for 10 days, but with this, it's, it's pretty much mandatory, they're going to be out for 10 days, and so it's the, the aspect of, of not just getting the makeup work or having the communication, but not being present for instruction that I think I get a little worried about, because you're looking at kids, may, you know, depending on how the 10 days falls, you know, missing, is it seven or eight school days, and that's, and many of them doing it, and so that's, that's a concern I have. I don't really have any other questions, I would be remiss, I think, if I didn't say something, I don't want to beat a dead horse, but, and I don't even know if it's an appropriate metaphor anymore, but, you know, I can't help but think that if we had the ability to not just encourage masking, that, that some of what we're experiencing now could have been mitigated and would be mitigated, but we can't. We'll note that the Austin Court of Appeals last week ruled against the governor's executive order becoming the third court of appeals, I believe, in Texas to do so, and also a federal district court in Austin issued an injunction against the executive order for discriminating against students with disabilities, however, that, that, and that was a permanent injunction after, after essentially a trial on the merits. I will note that that ruling has been stayed by the Fifth Circuit temporarily during the appeal, and so I think legal, as a legal matter... And so I think legal, as a legal matter, our hands remain tied on that. And we have hashed this battle out many times here and I don't want to, to refight it here again tonight. But I do want to, once again, put on record my extreme displeasure with the executive overreach that we have had to endure during this, this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chapa. Mrs. McMurro?
Thank you. I just wanted to thank Dr. Cavassos and Central Administration for implementing the Central Office Helping Hands and the January pause. That's huge. I would even, you know, call it more of a January repurposing than a January pause because, you know, the ship isn't stopping. All of, all of the bullets there in the January pause slide, that doesn't mean instructional support for teachers isn't there.
Correct.
That doesn't mean collaboration is stopping. That doesn't mean lesson planning is stopping. But it does mean that we value our teachers and administrators and support staff's physical and, in, in many cases, mental health. And this is an action that I really hope that we could consider extending even beyond January. Like I said, you know, teachers get instructional support at a campus level, whether they have their E2L coaching sessions or not. And, you know, if you work on a campus or if you are supporting someone that does at this time, I just want to say thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. And I love these two initiatives. I really hope that, and I know it's already probably in the works, but I really hope that it could be considered to extend. And I've heard a lot of great feedback from campus staff as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee McMurro. Thank you, Mrs. McMurro. Mrs. Fowler?
Thank you, President Mays. I was having a conversation today with the retired Arlington teacher, Rinthea Clements, who was an English teacher at Martin. And she's come up with a really great plan that I think may be helpful for a lot of students since they have to be out for the 10 days. She has a nonprofit Excel Learning Academy and they're all staffed with retired Arlington teachers. She is, she has been doing all the tutoring in her group in person, but she's offering to do virtual tutoring to students who have to be out for the 10 days. And they'll do 30-minute lessons, they'll do hour lessons. They have specialists in reading, writing, all levels of math, foreign languages, chemistry. They do it all. And these are retired teachers who know the material, know the students, know the schools. And I think it's a really great opportunity for a lot of these students who are going to be out for 10 days. They could do a Zoom call with a qualified teacher. These teachers also have access, if the student and parent says it's okay, these teachers can reach out to the student's teachers and find out, you know, what are you doing? What do we need to prepare for? So they can have that communication. And I think this may really be something for these students that are being out for 10 days instead of feeling so lost and not knowing what's going on. These teachers are there and they'll do the, the virtual call with them, they'll do the Zoom, they'll teach them, they'll get them caught up, they'll keep them caught up with the rest of the class. So it's Excel Learning Academy and they're a nonprofit. They're located in Lake Church, they're on Little Road and very convenient. But they're offering all these virtual tutoring sessions to the students who have to be out for 10 days. And it's grade one through 12. They, they tutor it all. So I think this may be an opportunity for these students to not feel like they're getting behind and feeling lost, that they have a teacher that could be teaching them. And I just wanted to add that.
Thank you. Thank you for that information. We certainly can look into that. Trustee Fowler? Thank you, Mrs. Fowler. Mr. Will Banks?
Thank you, President Mays, and thank you, Trustee Fowler. I think that's an excellent resource because my main concern is what we've seen is a huge disruption with Omicron in terms of continuity of instruction with, and, and being able to get kids back to a regular pace in their learning. And we know, you know, I've said over and over again tonight, we've got a heavy lift here. And I think providing a resource like that is incredible. And I, and we also know that teachers are stressed out and burned out. And this has been very hard and Omicron has made it even harder. And so I concur with my colleague, Ms. McMurro, as well, that thank you for the Helping Hands. And I would reiterate her push if we could extend the January pause into February, at least, and then reevaluate because they are overworked and stressed out. And this is, you know, it's been difficult. So it's been very well received from teachers I've talked to. And so we could, whatever we can do to extend that, if that's a possibility, I would, I would jump on Ms. McMurro's bandwagon on, on that idea. The other thing, again, my concern is where students are in the disruption that this current wave has put with the number of students out on quarantine. And I'm a little bit confused because I know, you know, we changed the five, down to five days. We know with this variant that the delta, or the, the, well, the number of days between exposure and when onset of symptoms are, is greatly reduced from Delta and previous. And then, you know, since most people are vaxxed, their actual days of experiencing the illness are just a couple of days, unlike with previous. And so five days makes sense, especially for staff. And I'm glad to see it's moving in that direction. And I'm a little disheartened to find out that the rules and the hands of the commissioner are tied, that we can't do the same thing for students. And I know it's frustrating because you read all the time, I, I read what's going on nationally at other schools and the best practices in the response to this ongoing pandemic, that a popular strategy is test to stay or test to return, where they have policies for students to, if they're exposed, to not quarantine. Or if they're, they currently had the disease and then test negative to return. I mean, is there anything we can do around that? You know, I know we're, we're kind of stuck on if you've got it, you've got, it's 10 days period for students. There's no other options we have that if they're recovered, to bring them in sooner? Just want clarification on that.
Yeah, so set a context to this. So interestingly enough, Commissioner and others pushed really hard because it's not easy with the bureaucracy to make it a communicable disease classification last year. But that came with restrictions and it applied last year. That's what, but it became on the list of communicable disease. So those restrictions haven't been lifted and there's really no way around it as we understand it in this he's described. He's working on it because just like they've classified it communicable disease with those parameters, very specific, by the way, parameters. He's trying to get it, you know, adjusted. And that's, that's his continued work. He was actually, he being Commissioner was hopeful to be able to, you know, have a change to this week. And I didn't go into detail as to what, what roadblock he hit, but it just didn't seem very optimistic about it. In fact, like I said, our next call is scheduled for two weeks from now, so it's not like something is imminent. It could all change. I think he's also, the Department of Health is also seeing that this may be a plateau and things may be starting to change again. And by the time they change it, maybe things have changed, but that's speculation on that. But the other part is, is the reality is it's classified that way and he doesn't seem to have any ability to change it right now.
And so just to be clear, because I get asked this by parents, is that if their student tests positive, it's 10 days no matter what, even if they test negative after recovery?
I was looking at Ms. Minnelli and she's saying yes. That's true.
It's 10 days period.
Yes, it is. And again, the, the communicable disease and that whole process that took a long time, by the way, was finally done and now it seems to be something that we're locked into, or he's locked into.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Will Banks. I do not see any other questions. I have one question, Dr. Hill, and that's just for clarity. On the slide that you had, thank you, Dr. Brown. On the slide that you had up that had the locations and saying how we ran out of the testing kits at our location on Pioneer?
Yes.
But we're opening up another one on Monday with Tarrant County?
It's a partnership with Tarrant County.
Okay. So if we don't get in the supplies, just so the community knows, because I know that's been a very successful testing site.
Yes.
They can go there on Monday if we're not open again on Pioneer. Is that correct?
That's correct. And that's on our website. It's a pop-up on the website as we speak.
Very good.
And other locations in Arlington that are currently available as well. So it's in addition to those. Thank you, Dr. Hill.
Yes.
It's a good, thank you for the point because, thank you for your work on securing that again. We, we let it go because there was no, but no demand and now we need it back. And Dr. Hill, thank you for your persistence.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on the agenda, I would like to switch things up. So before we go to the consent agenda, I would like to go ahead and move to letter B under discussion, our 2021-2022 financial update. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Mays. And so we have a, a financial update that Ms. Moss has done before. And so we bring this financial update. It's appropriate to bring these on a frequent basis. And we want to do it before consent because it has information there that applies to the consent information as well. So Ms. Moss, take us through the financial update. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Cavassos. Thank you, President Mays, trustees. And we thank you for your service. Appreciate you all. Again, as Dr. Cavassos said, we want to, on a regular basis, bring you up to speed on finances. Tonight's financial update will be brief and it will focus on the budget part of the, of our finances tonight. So we'll go through that. There we go. A little pause. So tonight, the finances that we're talking about are as of November the 30th of 2021. The last time we presented our finances to you, we talked about the general fund only. And we had told you that we would talk about some of the other funds in our other presentation. So tonight, we'll talk about our food and nutrition, our natural gas, debt service, and our capital projects fund. So these are some of the items that are, financial items that are in the consent agenda item tonight. And we'll start with that general operating budget. So in the budget amendment for general operating, maybe my button's going, I'm pushing the button, but it's not going, so. There we go. So the major changes in general operating are the $2.4 million increase in other revenues. And that's an additional insurance recovery. We've talked about that before from the winter storm. Also, the $5.8 million that you see in, is in multiple expenditure functions, that's the one-time payment for employees that was paid out in December of 2021. And then we have $890,000 in multiple expenditure functions, again, that are adjustment to workers' compensations budget. So here's just a look at the revenue on the budget amendment in the general operating fund. That 571 is what was adopted back in June. And we did have one revision already, so that changed it to 585. If you'll recall, that was a $13 million in ESAR from 2020 that was in, moved to the 2022 budget, from the 2020-2021 budget that moved to the 2022 budget. So in tonight's budget amendment, we are proposing a $2.4 million change. I'm in this button, are not working tonight. So the 2.4, let me see if I can go. There we go. It's a very, very, very long pause. So the $2.4 million is, again, insurance adjustments, as we said on the previous screen. And once that's approved, that number that was adopted at, in June 30th of 571 will change to 587.7 million. On the expenditure side of the budget, the, a large amount there is the 2.7 million. That's an offset for some of the insurance on the winter, winter storm again. And again, the total expenditures as adopted was 584 million. The revised budget and the first budget amendment was 588. We're asking tonight on the expenditure side for 9.5 million, which would land us at 598.3 million once it is approved. The surplus we adopted in June was 12.8 million. The initial budget amendment changed that to 3.5 million. Tonight, the revenue and the expenditures total, 7.0 million that we're asking you for, making the, the surplus, the deficit budget 10.6 million tonight after approval. So some, just want to share again and, and remind you of some of the future financial considerations we're looking at. Of course, we're still dealing with the impact of COVID-19, that you've heard that several times tonight. It's impacting our enrollment, it's impacting our attendance. But we do have the ESAR funds that will help on the budget side. And of course, the whole harmless, we've, TEA has told us that we will be held harmless for the first six weeks. They're looking at the fourth, six weeks as well. What we're hoping is they look at this year in a whole, as had, as they've done in the past. That would be very beneficial for the district if they did. Again, we're still looking at local and state economic conditions. Fortunately, here in Arlington, we're still doing well as far as the economy. We're looking at the state's ability to sustain the current level, level of state funding. And Senate Bill One, we talked about that the last time in the last financial update, where that $25,000 homestead exemption is changing to $40,000 if approved by the voters. And so the impact of ESAR funding, I just want to put this up there as a reminder for you, the $13.9 million that I spoke of earlier, we talked about that in the last update, and the $5.6 million reduction of budgeted general fund expenditures that were applied to the ESAR budget and taken out of the general operating budget. So now we'll move on to food and nutrition services. We're not asking for an amendment to this budget, but I just wanted to share with you the adopted budget deficit of 178,384. Some of the things that we're looking at on the food services side that may impact that budget. Mr. Lewis is doing an outstanding job in, in tracking that and monitoring that budget. Of course, he's facing the same supply chain challenges as everyone else is. And he, he calculated his non-food requisition trays and we were seeing an increase of 589,000 just for the trays. That's not food, but that's just for the trays that we use for the students. Salaries increasing, increase compared to budget. That's the compensation, compensation increase that was approved for our cafeteria workers. And then an increase in federal meal reimbursement. He's monitoring that increase as compared to budget as well. We're also seeing a decrease in local meal revenue with universal free, free meals. That's driving down that revenue that we normally see for local meals. Natural gas, we're not asking any thing to be admitted in that budget. And this is just a snapshot of, of the adopted budget, showing that there are no revisions. The debt service budget, we're not asking for revisions, we're monitoring that as well. 495,000 is what is the surplus that we budgeted or adopted back in June. We're still looking at some of the considerations there too. We've got upcoming bond transactions here in the next couple of weeks where we're selling our bond authorization, we'll have some bond refunding, bond redemptions. All of that will impact this budget. And just a little picture of our tax collections where we're seeing a slight increase over 2020. Capital projects, of course, our bond work is here and some of our non-bond capital projects are here as well. The major change to this budget that we're asking you to consider tonight is 29 and a half million in facility acquisitions and construction. What that is, is after the audit is finalized and we know how much money we have left over from last year. What that is, is after the audit is finalized, and we know how much money we have left over from last year, we then add it to the budget for this year. So that's a picture of capital projects. If you'll look at the bottom line there, the deficit at adoption time was 379 million. It was not included in the first budget amendment. We're proposing tonight 29.4 million, and that would leave us at 408 million. This budget is a little different because we don't put the revenue on there from our bond sales until after the sale. And Mr. Horn and his team are watching this budget closely as well. You'll see there that we are having challenges there as well with rising costs of construction materials. The supply chain, same thing on that side of the budget. And of course, the diminished workforce. All of that is impacting that budget as well. Mr. Horn and his team have done an outstanding job with that. We're still on track with the bond fund, so just wanted to share that information out. And that concludes my report for tonight. I'm glad to answer any questions in regard to that.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Moss. I will say that the teamwork that Dr. Hill talked about earlier, that transcends from the classroom to administration, finance. You present this report, and we get the numbers, but all the work that's going on behind these numbers, how fluid it is for you, ESER funds, money we're receiving now, but we can't spend it after so many years. How do we? Thank you for all of the hard work that you are doing to make sure that we stay as financially sound as possible during these difficult times. Really do appreciate it. Mr. Will Banks?
Thank you, President Mays, and thank you, Ms. Moss. Just a few quick questions. On the general operating budget, on category code 51 for plant maintenance and operations, that $2.7 million, what are the big drivers? Was that primarily what you mentioned earlier in the bonus and things that were paid out, or were there other cost drivers?
Part of that is the bonus. The other part is the expenditure side of the budget for the insurance and the winter storm. So we get the revenue and then the expenditures. The expenditures weren't all, did not all happen in the 2021 budget. And so some of those expenditures are occurring here. So you see the offset of about 2.4 million, yes.
Okay. So yeah, okay. I thought that was above and beyond, and then, okay, but yeah, no, that makes sense. Okay.
And the remainder would be the one-time payment.
Yeah, and so in the next slide where you talk about general operating fund considerations, you mention future considerations, enrollment and attendance. And so just to be clear, our decrease in attendance and enrollment is that? That's not already updated from what was budgeted in here, even though we're seeing lower numbers there?
It is not. And typically, we don't update the budget for state revenue this early on. But we are monitoring it on a regular basis.
And we've got our fingers crossed that we're going to be held harmless.
Absolutely, we do.
So everyone do fingers and toes. And on the ESER funds, you have that listed there. But ESER funds that we're dividing up, the ESER III funds that we're dividing up over the three years, those are already included in the budget, correct?
In the ESER II budget. They're not currently included in the general operating budget.
Okay, but what are we realistically expecting to accrue this year and this year's budget from the ESER, total ESER funds?
So.
That aren't in the budget?
We considered just splitting up the ESER II funds. I think that's what you're talking about, where we're going to hold ourselves harmless as far as attendance and enrollment. So it equated to about $15 million a year. What we're waiting on, though, before we make that decision is, are we going to be held harmless? How does it impact our bottom line? You'll see where we've already added the 13.9 million in this current year, or our budget deficit would look much different than it is.
To be clear, that 13.9 was.
Previous.
Previous hold harmless. Okay, but in the other big chunk of money, the last big chunk of money that we have to spend over three years, that money's already been divided up and put into this budget.
It has not been amended in the budget yet.
Okay, and so that's what I'm asking about, what we realistically or ballpark can we expect? Because my guess is that that'll go, that and the hold harmless will go to wipe out that 10 million deficit that we're currently showing.
Yes, so we had 59 million in ESER II, and that 13.9 came from ESER II as well. And we were going to divide up the other, the balance of that for the next three years. So you're correct. If that's what we decide to do, if we're not held harmless by TEA, then it should help with that deficit. Also, when you look at the deficit and you're looking at it this time of year, there are certain things that we still have to look at. We're monitoring our taxable values as well, and that comes into play. Our tax collections come into play. So we want to see where we land before we make those decisions.
Okay, so we've all seen the news about the inflation and the scarcity of goods. And we know Mr. Lewis has been impacted, you know, quite heavily by the food shortages and supplies and increases in costs. But at this time, you're not recommending a modification to that budget because.
We are not, not at this time.
Of his great financial stewardship and working around and saving money in other areas. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Lewis. And the same thing in Kelly's department on the bond. And I mean, I, you know, I think, what was your note? Up to 40% on some items, increasing costs, 30 to 40% for things like steel, concrete, insulation. But I guess that's not a significant number in the overall construction budget, capital projects budget. And then therefore, that's why, what was the total change? Oh, 29, 29 million. So that was significant. And that's, those are the primary drivers is from inflation on that 29.4 million.
Yes, and let me be clear on the 29 million. That's what we had left over last year that we didn't spend, that we were able to put into, to carry over to this year's budget. That's why we amended that.
Oh, okay, so we, yeah, because you don't have the.
Yes, we're not, we're not.
You're not showing revenues, but yet we're carrying that money over.
Yes.
We didn't expect to carry over, so then we're planning to spend that money to help alleviate the inflation and other increased costs.
So there were projects that we had budgeted for last year, and now we're moving that budget over to this year because we didn't get to those projects and didn't spend the money. So we're moving it over to current year.
Okay, so it's really not increasing?
No.
Okay, all right. Gotcha. That's all my questions. Thank you, Ms. Moss.
Thank you, Mr. Will Banks. I do not see any other questions. So with that, thank you once again, Ms. Moss.
Thank you. And President Mays, if I can, it's a team effort. I know we have a lot going on as far as school finance right now. That's why I wanted to pull it all together and show that when we talk about the budget, we talk about all budgets. And as we do these financial reports, we'll bring more to, more to you as well, just for transparency purposes and to share out with the board and the community.
Thank you. Okay, so the next thing on our agenda is our consent agenda items. These consist of routine items grouped together for approval as one item. Unless removed from the consent agenda, these items will be acted on at one time with no discussion. Trustees, are there any requests for items to be withdrawn from the consent agenda for further discussion? I see no lights. Is there a motion to accept the agenda? Do I have a second?
Second.
So I have a motion by Mr. Will Banks, a second by Mrs. Fowler. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. All present vote in the affirmative. Motion passes. So now we will discuss our discussion item, House Bill 3 and District Improvement Plan Progress Monitoring Update. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Mays. And we bring as part of our reporting and monitoring calendar, a House Bill 3 and DIP update with our performance, student performance. So Dr. Wirths?
All right, good evening again, President Mays, members of the board, Dr. Cavassos. I'm here this evening to give our monthly update around our goals that were articulated and established for House Bill 3 and the District Improvement Plan, which is currently in place. So what I'll be reporting on today is around curriculum assessments that just took place, which is CA 2. And I thought I would just take a minute to articulate to the community what curriculum assessments are and what they're intended to do. Curriculum assessments are assessments we give at the district level to monitor student performance as they progress through the scope and sequence of our curriculum in our core content areas, specifically those areas that are tested through the STAR exam. These assessments are aligned to the scope and sequence, and they're cumulative in nature, but they're not comprehensive. Meaning, as we move from CA 1 to CA 2, we do hold, we do reassess some of the objectives that were assessed in CA 1 in CA 2, but we don't assess everything all over again. And we do that to maintain or understand how students are maintaining their mastery as they move and progress through the curriculum. It is provided, as I mentioned, to STAR-tested areas, and the intent is to provide a summative measure to how students are progressing or mastering content that's taught within the scope and sequence during a specific period of time. It's also designed to give teachers formative data as they make instructional decisions as students move through the curriculum. And then, of course, we use it to predict future performance using psychometric properties that are established in our CA exams as we use them. So what are CA 2, now that we have our CA 2 assessments being administered, how are we progressing towards annual goals? So what I'm going to do is I will share with you our progress in reading and math. And I wanted to articulate basically how to read the first slide, and then they're all pretty much established in the same way. What I'll be sharing or reporting out today are only those targets that were specifically articulated in the board goals, just for some continuity. And I thought I would start off with a quote by Hugh McColl. If you're wondering who he is, he is a former executive for the Bank of America CEO. And he said, "Without question, reading has been the foundation of whatever success I've had in my life." And he's had a lot of success. And I think that's really the essence of what I want to articulate tonight and why we're talking specifically around reading, is because reading really lays the foundation for student success in any content area. So the first one I'm going to talk about is third-grade STAR reading. This is the Early Literacy Performance Objective for House Bill 3. Our target over the next several years is to move from 57% to 74%. And the way you'll read these slides is pretty self-explanatory, but we articulated the baseline of where we started in 2021, what our goal to get to in 2022 is, which is this year. And then, as we progress through each of our CA's, our benchmarks, and finally, the STAR exam, we're trying to articulate, show you how we're actually moving. So as you can see, in CA 1, 55% of our students had reached the approaches or better mark, which is passing. And in CA 2, we're at 63%. So if today was the day, which it's not, but if today was the day, we would have exceeded our end-of-year target already at third-grade reading, which is great. And so because this is used as a predictor, we're in the right trajectory, which is a good thing. This is eighth-grade STAR reading, and I'm just going to go through the slides slowly, and I'll point out a couple of things that'll allow you to look at them in front of you. Here, we've dipped a little bit down. Our baseline was 67. Our end-of-year goal is 73. We started at 69. We're at 66, but we're going to keep progressing. And I'm going to share with you a little bit later on down in the presentation what you typically can anticipate in terms of progress from CA 1 to CA 2, and how much movement you typically would see. Here's English 1. Our goal is to get to 74% by 2026. Our end-of-year target this year is 64% for all students, and we exceeded that target in CA 1, and we're continuing to get even better in CA 2. We're at 69. In English 2, our target is 76% by August 2026. Our end-of-year target this year is 67, and as of CA 2, we're sitting at 68%. So we're making good gains. For our district improvement plan, for the overall district reading, our goal is to get to 79%. Our end-of-year target for this year is 64, and we're sitting right at 64 with our CA 2. So as you can see, with reading, we're making good progress in terms of meeting our overall objectives across the district. I thought I would articulate some of the response, the instructional responses that we are making when it comes to our data. So we have Office of School Leadership and campuses that are looking at their individual student data and responding to those data inside the classroom. And at the district level in our departments, we also run an item analysis, analyze our data, and identify what areas and things we can do to help support that work at the campuses. I thought I would share with you, even though I'm not reiterating, I'm not sharing with you any data from screener data for K through 2, but because I articulated those outcomes in previous presentations, I thought I would just give you a quick update on some of the things we're still doing for K through 2, even though I'm talking today really about 3 through 8 in high school. So we are working, continue to increase our dedicated time to instruction and phonological awareness and phonics during classroom instruction. And we're helping do that by working with teachers and schools during content conversations. So content conversations are basically previews that we do with teachers to give them a sense of what's coming in the curriculum in their units of study, what are typical pitfalls that kids find themselves in in that unit of study, and how you can avoid those as a classroom teacher. We also have inside our instructional materials, a balanced literacy integrated planning template, which helps teachers to ensure that they're including all components of the balanced literacy model in their instruction. We're also going to continue to provide instructional resources to students as they're grouped using our screener tools. So when students participate in the M-class assessment, there is a progress monitoring tool there, and there's also grouping tools. So teachers can group students based on parts of the assessment they're actually struggling with. So when they're doing small group instruction, they can customize it for the needs of the students they're working with. And then finally, we have added or continue to emphasize that they're in the curriculum documents for K through 2. And just as an FYI, in reading, we actually integrate reading and social studies together in the primary grades. We have an explanation about the Fountas and Penelphonic Spelling and Word Study Kits in there, so teachers know and have a reference to that resource as they work on this instruction in the classroom. And then, of course, providing professional learning to teachers as they work on integrating phonics lessons into their classroom. In 3 through 8, we are leveraging our coaching conversations to really help them as they work with teachers in their, using their data to drive instruction in the classroom. Coaching conversations, just so you know, we, each of our campuses have coaches. In our professional learning department, we have a coaching department, and they work with our instructional coaches. And one of the things we've talked a lot about is it's important not only to understand the process of coaching, but you have to understand the content, too, so you can marry those two things together. In other words, if I'm going to coach a literacy teacher, a teacher in literacy, I have to understand how to teach literacy in order to do that coaching. So in grades 3 through 8, it's their coaching conversations are primarily around using iStation data because we have a transition to M-class. In primary grades, M-class is what you see in front of you. But we are moving towards M-class in future years, which I'm going to talk about a second. For iStation progress monitoring, as a point of reference, students who take iStation also receive, it basically uses an artificial intelligence to move kids into lessons that are based on their individual needs. We had over, as of last, earlier this week, we had up to 10,000 students who have logged in. So we know that they're actually utilizing the resource to help, which is a good thing. It also provides interventions specifically customized towards what kids' needs are, and teachers can leverage these interventions to help them as they work with kids on their House Bill 4545 tutoring. And then in 7th and 8th grade, we are continuing with our strategy around close reading and pushing in our content conversations at the campus to help teachers as they implement that strategy. And then some other just generalized reading instructional responses we have of, as you know, is just a reminder, our comprehensive literacy and math frameworks. And we continue to help teachers think about those guidelines as they structure their lessons. We are prepping for the transition to M-class in the upper grades 3 through 8 this summer. But we do have one school, Fitzgerald Elementary, who is piloting that in grades 3 through 5 as part of the Raising Blended Learners Grant. And so I only highlight that there for you to know that we're kind of in that process of working through that transition. of working through that transition. And then finally, we do have a cohort of campuses that are continuing to work with an expert that we have contracted with for several years, Audrey Bragg. She's a balanced literacy expert, and she works with campuses in professional learning and the implementation of that model in the classroom. And then we have a resource that teachers have access to called Newsimatic. And what that does is it provides over 10,000 articles that are at different lexile levels, so students can access science and social studies and different cross-curricular kind of texts as they're learning in the reading classroom, ensuring that that text is not only at their instructional level, but also at their independent levels. Next, I'm going to go over mathematics. And there is a statistician named William Paul Thurston, who said mathematics is not about numbers, equations, computations, or algorithms, it is about understanding. And I think I have learned more about that as I've collaborated with Dr. Lopez and the forum with Dr. Barlow more than anything. Numbers are really numbers, but they're actually there telling a story, and I thought this quote really articulated that. And we want kids to see math in the same light. So I'm going to go through the same slides that you saw structurally for reading, and I'll talk to you a little about math. Just as you mentioned earlier this evening, math is still a struggle. The gaps in math are really significant, and they continue to be significant, and we're making progress, but you're going to notice that the math kind of looks very much the same. It's a little growth here, and then in some places it dips a little. So third grade math, the positive thing is we're making progress. So our goal is to get to 52, and we went from 43 to 48. And now our goal is to keep going through our benchmark and STAR. Our target by 2026 is back to 73, which is our baseline. In 8th grade STAR math, we are really pretty much holding steady. 1%, you really, it's, there's not a lot of growth, obviously, any at all, or it's not a lot of decline. Our target is to get to 57%. I will say, just as a reminder, 8th grade math is the area we took the largest hit with STAR, and there is a lot of ground to cover. So it was a very aggressive goal to begin with, but we're still working at it. Algebra 1, we made some progress. We moved from 58 to 62%. Our target is to get to 81% by August of 2026. One thing I'd like to just point out here is that these are the students that took 8th grade math last year. So it's positive for us to see that they're actually doing better as they move into algebra 1, even though we saw so many struggles in 8th grade math. And then finally, our overall math objective, we're sitting right about 50%. So we went up a little bit, but we still have some ground to go because our target for this year is 58. Now, one of the questions we often get, well, okay, so it's CA 1 to CA 2, how does this progress typically look from year to year? And so I thought I'd provide a slide that would just show you how it usually looks. This is a slide that articulates what our all groups look like in 2020, 2021, 2022, in CA 1, and what it looked like in CA 2. And you can see, you see similar trends. And the only reason I bring that up to you is just so there's not a lot of fret. This is what typically happens. You notice more things happening when you get to benchmark, which is getting ready to get started in February, not a ton that change between CA 1 and CA 2. And the reason that is, is because the number of skills that you're assessing in CA 1 and CA 2 is much more, it's much shorter, it's much smaller. When you do a benchmark, you're actually using a released STAR exam. So it's a STAR exam that students took in a prior year. We literally print it out, and we, well, we don't necessarily print it out, but they retake that exam. So you, in the benchmark, you're giving them a summative exam that covers everything for an entire school year. And even though sometimes in the benchmark, students don't do very well on certain points, like certain objectives, we don't fret over that either because we can look at the scope and sequence and say, "Well, we never even got to that." But with CA 1 and CA 2, it's shorter, their tests are shorter, they cover less ground in terms of the curriculum to measure, and so you're going to see less movement between the two places. And the last thing I'll point out is the amount of time between CA 1 and CA 2 is very, very short, but there is a chunk of time between when school starts and benchmark happens. You're getting through the majority of the school year. So what are some of these instructional responses that we're focusing on across math and science? So I threw 6th grade in here, even though 6th grade is not articulated, but just because it impacts other areas. So one of our primary objectives when it comes to mathematics is really focusing on the CRA strategy. And CRA basically means you're helping students transition in mathematics from the concrete to the representational, which is illustrations, to the abstract, which is the algorithm. And so we've been focusing on the CRA model in 6th grade and working with the executive directors from Tracy, Dr. Brown's department, to really develop action plans to help really work with 6th grade teachers as they work through some of their challenges. Also, the same thing with algebra 1 and biology, there are comprehensive plans for working with teachers during the PLC time in both those two content areas to really help address some of the progress that we need to see in those two content areas in high school. And then, of course, just the general response is we're continuing to provide training intervention groups using Math Inventory, which is our screener in mathematics. And we've embedded intervention documents into our curriculum. And I'm going to show you in the next slide an example of what that looks like for algebra in the 3rd grade. We also have had over 18 Math Inventory sessions provided to help inform instructional classrooms in the classroom, and those started in August, so we've had 18 over the course of semester 1. And then we are working with Region 11 to implement what's called Accelerated Mathematics Proficiency. It's their AMP program. And in essence, what it does is it creates a customized learning pathway to teach instructional mathematics to students in the classroom based upon where they are in terms of their proficiency. And then finally, of course, Imagine Math, we have that available to use as an intervention, and we have pathways articulated in our curriculum documents. It's how you can, what you can use in terms of interventions in your curriculum documents should you find students have struggles with different points. So I'm going to give you a couple of examples of what that looks like. So here, what you see in front of you is an example of our Curriculum Assessment 2 intervention form for 3rd grade math, a snippet of it, and then algebra 1. And in essence, what it does is it looks at the item on the assessment, we look at the standard that was actually taught, what are the concepts that students need to know, and then what are some optional interventions you can use depending on whether your students struggle with those concepts or not. And that is available for students, the two examples I have here are algebra and math, but they're in the other areas as well. Here is also an example of a companion document. So as you know, we're in, we use Text Resource Systems as our, Text Resource System as our primary core curriculum for grades 3 through 12. And so we design and develop our own companion documents that help teachers make sense of some of the resources we have in our system that are not part of TRS. So what you see in front of you is the 3rd grade math companion document. And what you'll notice on here are two things I want to point out. One is the priority instructional content and resources. So basically, we call that the picker. If you'll remember, at the very beginning of the school year, I mentioned that the curriculum department was working to identify what are the priority standards and things to pay attention to in a unit of study. We highlight those things there. And then also, there is a section for interventions and extensions. So students who are struggling with specific concepts, there's recommendations for interventions you can do during your classroom time. And if you have students that are ready to move on and be extended, there's options for that as well. Finally, last but not least, what we've noticed, in a system this large, I always compare it to trying to turn a cruise ship. It's really hard. And a lot of the challenge comes from just being in the know. If you were to go into the Text Resource System and look at our curriculum, there are so many resources, it's almost like daunting. And so one of the things that I've been talking to the curriculum department about is how can we do little commercials, just bite-sized things that help people know really quickly, "Hey, if you're going to pay attention to a lot of things, this one document is real helpful." So what we've been doing is we've been doing a couple of things. During our ILA with principals, we do these, we literally call them commercials. One of them actually physically made a commercial, and then actually, Dr. Lopez did one that was fantastic, which was a commercial about how to do an item analysis. And then we also have some new communication that's going out. So there's in the know communication that's coming out of Dr. Brown's office. We're collaborating with her office to make sure that information gets sent out to principals. We're highlighting things in the MyASD newsletter, and we're just trying to make sure that it's not a lot of information that would be so overwhelming you wouldn't want to look at it. It's really just bite-sized, quick, and easy for teachers. The other thing about it too is we're providing continuous training to campus leadership on really understanding the curriculum documents so that there's alignment between how teachers are designing for instruction in the classroom and what the curriculum is calling for. And then, of course, working with our coaches. As you know, we're working with outside coaches to help us with best practices in reading mathematics. What we want to make sure those coaches do is that they're articulating what resources are available to teachers as they're working with them. And so we've been working and doing some training with that group because our curriculum is unique to us. And then finally, what's coming in March is we do bootcamp sessions, and so those are actually in design. And bootcamps are basically resources we provide to teachers as they try to get kids geared up and ready for the STAR exam as a last-ditch effort when you're really close to the finish line and you kind of want to get there. The last thing I wanted to articulate is some of the things that are coming out of the Office of School Leadership. There are four main things that I'm going to share tonight, tiered teacher support, data talks, lesson alignment and formative feedback, formative assessment, which is known as LAFA, and then some of the best practices work. So when it comes to tiered support, the executive directors that are in Dr. Brown's office are individually working with the instructional leadership teams at each of the campuses and supporting them in a very individualized, differentiated way. And the one thing I would say that's very positive about that is because their bandwidth is tighter with fewer schools to really have to support, the quality of differentiation is, can be very, very high. And they've been doing an awesome job providing opportunities for us to even collaborate with them so that when we create responses to their needs at campuses, the two sides of the house, the academic services side and the Office of School Leadership can work in sync with one another. There are data teacher, teacher data meetings that are happening during the PLCs where there's support for teachers in terms of developing their instructional plans in ways that are differentiated for kids. DDI coaching is still, is continuing as part of, it's the TEAL process that we've been working on with Region 11. That coaching's happening with coaches and the principals, the EDs and the principals, and helping schools really leverage that process or that model to understand what kids need as they're designing instruction. And then, of course, the tiered support for teachers in terms of side-by-side planning and modeling. Just like students, we all have strengths, and we all have areas to grow, and so we want to make sure that the support we provide to our instructional staff is differentiated for their own needs as well. Another one are data talks. So students are doing their own tracking of their own goals. We feel like it's super important that students understand where they are in their learning progression and take responsibility for their learning. DDI implementation, like I mentioned. And then the last one that I want to just draw your attention to is our progress around House Bill 4545 tutoring. There has been significant collaboration between Specialized Learning Services, which is Ms. Bustamante and Julie McGuire out of Office of State Federal Programs, and Dr. Buell from Office of School Leadership, and really putting together a system that's really strong so that we know exactly which students need it, how much time they've been receiving their tutoring, are they making progress? And it's really, they've done a great job, and it's been a monumental task. So I'd like to give some kudos to them. The Strategic Support Network, which is a network of schools that are probably our most needy in terms of needing significant assistance, have been implementing a few specific strategies. One is LAFA, and this is coaching they're receiving from Region 11 to really think about how they make sure their lessons are aligned and that they're leveraging the data from their formative assessments to design the differentiated lessons. In essence, while this sounds like something different, it is very much aligned to the best practices that we've been talking about. They've also been focusing on evidence of their implementation of the target improvement plans that each of them have inside, at their schools. And then, of course, there's the support from the instructional facilitators and other members of the school improvement team that go out. And then finally, really working on focusing on the priority standards when they're planning for instruction so that the schools can make sure they're really hitting the targets or the standards that are the most significant in terms of each of the units of study. And then last but not least is just a reiteration of our continued focus around reading and mathematics coaching around the four best practices. Principals also do what we call triad walks, where they independently, in their triads, without their supervisor, just with each other as a collaborative group, go and walk classrooms in each other's schools to look at best practice, to talk about what they're seeing, think about implementation, to support one another in their work. And then, of course, the executive directors support them through their learning community meetings. And then, as I mentioned earlier, the instructional facilitators are actually out on campuses every day. So what does this look like in terms of accountability? So I mentioned CA 2, but the question we always ask ourselves is if today was the day, what would it look like? So if you were to, if we were to be rated today based on our CA 2 results, right now we would be sitting at an overall district grade of a 72. And that's what we have. Any questions I can answer for you?
Thank you very much, Dr. Wertz. Do I have any trustees with any questions, comments? Yes, Mrs. McMura?
Thank you, Dr. Wertz. My favorite two practices that you mentioned in regards to literacy and then math was guided reading and the focus on a multitude of interventions for math. Because the best analogy that made sense to me ever as an educator was literacy, especially fluency and comprehension, it's like paving a path. And we've talked about this. Just read. The more you read, you know, that gets boosted. But with math, it's more like building a wall. If you're missing the bricks down at the bottom, you can't continue. You have to address that foundation. So these practices really hit home in regards to addressing that. Guided reading moves all readers. From your highest flyer to your student who's reading, you know, much below grade level, everyone's moving forward. So that's great that that's an emphasis. I do want to ask a question about the math interventions. Can we go back to the slide that had an example of the companion document, I think it was? So this is a very comprehensive list of interventions that pertain to this pocket of the pacing. Where within, and I'm assuming this would look different at the elementary versus high school level, but where within the instructional day where these interventions take place? Because we know the curriculum train and the grade level teaks, that train's not stopping.
Right.
So where will this really take flight?
So that's a good question, and there are two places it can happen. I want to firstly lean in on your first comment, which is in the mathematics classroom, it is exactly as you described, which is you've got to build the wall from the bottom up, so to speak. So part of that is in the actual 90-minute math block, in our math framework, we have a 90-minute math block outline about how you would design your instruction. And if I was a teacher and I knew my kids were struggling with building blocks as they are working through their own learning pathways, I might embed in those pathways some specific interventions to catch some of them up, or I may even leverage it as part of my guided math group, because guided math is also one of our things, number talks, guided math. The other part is we have INE time. So we have an intervention and enrichment time. And basically, that is 30 minutes of time set aside in mathematics every day where a student can have customized differentiated learning for them based upon wherever they are. And so the interventions could take place there as well. The challenge really is not around INE, it's so much at the elementary level, even though if I'm just being totally frank, that there is a lot to do in a very short amount of time in elementary, and you have so many preps. But in secondary, you have a 90-minute math block, or I'm going to say a 90-minute period, and it's not articulated as cut and dry as you would in elementary because we have an INE time there and there, and in secondary, they address it a little differently. So in secondary, we still map out what we think is a recommended way that you would address instruction during the 90-minute math period, but we're still recommending through our best practices that that would still happen in the same way, small group instruction, which is in many classrooms, very, very necessary, and the only place where that's actually going to take place if it wasn't included in tutoring.
Absolutely. Thank you for that. And then can we go back to the slide with the 8th grade STAR reading data?
Yes.
With CA 1 and CA 2? And I guess my question would really apply to beyond 8th grade, but does this take into account our students' performance on the revising and editing?
So we have, so that's a good question. So for those of you that don't know, the reading exam is being redesigned at the state level. And so what we did is we still offered revising and editing multiple choice as a CA in our sequence. We had reading, like normal reading, and we had writing, multiple choice, that we offered during this period. What you're referring to is that there's also a constructive response portion, which is the old composition. We did not include that right at that moment, that actually happened last week. So we, as a district, have still administered assessments in writing for both the written composition portion, and we did a constructive response on our side. So we, in the way the constructive response on our side. So we, in the way the constructive response that works a little different, in old writing, it used to be in fourth and seventh grade, you would get a prompt that would say something to the effect of, "Talk about the time you made a new friend," and then they would write. I'm using that as a, and that actually was a prompt one year. Now, what the just what the state will be doing is they'll be taking a reading passage that is cross-curricular in nature. So it may be they're reading a science concept or a social studies concept, and they're going to be reading a passage, and then they're going to be asked a question to respond to that passage in a more rigorous way to be truthful. And so what our thought was is if you don't assess writing in a meaningful way, we will find ourselves in a scenario where kids are struggling with writing because we didn't embed it in the right way. So to respond to your question, what we did is we had the multiple choice available for students to take, and teachers could use that data. We weren't collecting at the system level because there is no account, there is no writing test this year, but we want teachers to know how their students are writing. And then that was just during regular stays. And then in a separate week altogether, we also gave them access to what we call to a locally designed, we created it, because we've you, we don't have the blueprint yet. We just have the samples from the state, a constructed response so that they could try it. The important thing to know, just if you, for those of you that may not know, is writing is no longer going to be like a fourth and seventh grade thing, it's a three through eight thing. So it'll be embedded in reading. When you take reading, you'll also be taking a revising and editing portion of writing, and you'll be taking a constructive response. In high school, English one and two, we've always had constructive response. They're just called open and open response answers, like they would ask them a question, they'd have to write an answer as part of their exam. That's going to be new for three through eight. And so to answer your question, yes, as a way of prepping, because we have to have some sense of understanding about, or teachers at least in campuses, about how they're doing.
Right.
If I can just add one more thing, you kind of got me on a passionate topic, because we literally talked about this even just the other day with my team, is as we move into the subject with, as we're moving down the down this semester, is making sure we're providing teachers with an understanding about how to understand whether that writing actually looks good or not. We have very limited information. We know that it's going to be scored on a five-point scale, but we don't necessarily know, we haven't seen the rubric yet. So the more information we get, we'll we'll run that out. When we have next year's CAs, it'll all be in there, because we we know if we're going to have a writing in our reading next year. So.
Well, and that's what I was really hoping for. I would like to align our district assessments to our state assessment as much as possible. And I see that we're covering all the pieces, but weaving together one assessment, one literacy assessment, as the state is doing, not only does the this trim down our number of assessment days, which I'm a huge fan of.
Right.
Because we need instructional days leading up to STAR, and just because it's much better for kids. But also, this aligns with the moves the state is making.
Right.
So how will this year's benchmark be formatted with reading?
It'll be aligned to the way they're going to take STAR this year. And that's the same reason why the CAs were designed the way they were separated, because we're trying to create, the thing we don't have is we don't have any psychometrics on the writing and the reading, the way it's going to look. So even next year, when we do our CAs and our, we won't have any way of predicting outcomes because we don't have a baseline point. This year, we know our CAs do show predictive value towards the STAR the way it's currently designed for reading. So our CAs are written in the and designed in the way they're going to be taking STAR in the spring this year. And next year, we'll write them for the way they're going to take spring next year. So to answer your question, benchmark, they'll be taking reading the way it's actually going to be delivered this year. We're not going to be integrating writing into the reading for the benchmark exam, because it's not going to help us in predicting how they're going to perform in reading this year. But it will help us in the future. We do, we still will assess writing. We still want teachers to have the access to the data to plan for it, but we don't want to mix the data to create a scenario where we can't really interpret it, because we're thinking, oh, their reading scores are lower. Well, they're not really going to be lower for this year's STAR. They're lower because we integrated something that they're not going to be held accountable to.
Right.
Yeah.
Does that include the revising and editing passages, though?
Yeah. So reading the way it looks this year is the way the benchmarks will look this year. Does that make sense? Like?
Yes.
Whatever is going to be included in STAR this year is the way their benchmarks will look like in February.
Okay, great. And one more question. Remind me, does CA two assess TEACs taught up until that point from the beginning of school year, or is it only standards that have been taught between CA one and CA two?
No, it includes some that all the way from the beginning, but not, it's not comprehensive. It's not, we don't go from the very beginning and just redo everything all over again. We we teach what was taught between CA one and CA two, and we grab a few of the standards from CA one and we embed them in. And the only reason we have to do that is otherwise we would create long assessments, and there is not a real appetite for that. It would be, to be honest, the longer the assessments are, the more information it actually yields to the teacher. But it does what you're, you have to balance between that and classroom time and all that. So.
Absolutely. And our teachers still have something like a timeline where they're very clear on what standards will be assessed on each assessment, right?
Yes, they are. And the other thing about it, too, is they they also, which we can't, we, as a district, we only collect data around the CAs, right, and benchmarks. But the reality is, is the curriculum is full of formative assessments. Teachers can assess their kids along the way around mastery. So even if we don't grab it, it doesn't mean the kids aren't necessarily mastering it. Teachers are taking care of that part.
Right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mrs. McMurra. Mr. Will Banks?
Thank you, President Mays. And just a couple of comments. And, you know, you know, what we've seen and what we've heard nationally is, you know, ma, reading, not as much as a problem as math. And where we are, where we were with CA one, CA two, bore that out. It, you know, third grade reading, great, we're on track to our HB3 goals. You know, on the eighth grade reading, I noticed there was a drop. Have we done any kind of analysis to kind of figure out why this score's dropping? It was great that you put in that chart that showed what we normally expect year to year comparison, or from CA one to CA two. But is there anything to be concerned of, you know, say on our eighth grade reading, and since there was a decline? We didn't see that increase that we saw in third grade.
Well, so the answer to your question is yes. There has been, we have done an item analysis, which does a couple of things. The way we look at our item analysis is we, thanks to Dr. Lopez's work, we have what we call, we have a document that basically helps us understand the level of difficulty that a question is designed, and there are psychometrics behind it. Because when you take the exam, as we've mentioned before, there are questions that are written in a way that everyone should get them right. And then there are questions that you actually designed for the majority for people not to get right. And that's how you start to distinguish between your high achievers and the ones that are kind of in between. And so the way that we label them at the state level is approaches meets and masters. And so Dr. Lopez did the same thing. So what we do is we are able to take that document, look at the questions and the level of difficulty, identify those items that majority of kids should be passing or or should not have missed, and then relook at the questions, try to understand what the problem may be, and what and make some discussions about whether it's a curricular issue, whether we need to provide additional support and redesign some of our content conversations to help them with that. So to answer your question, yes, we do know what the the challenges were. I don't have them right here in front of me, specifically around eighth grade math, but the curriculum department has analyzed it to try to understand like what the problem could have been in terms of the relationship to how they performed on the individual questions and the concepts connected to those questions. I could tell you from that document, we know how pervasive it was, how what percentage of kids missed that whole concept across the district. Do we need to spiral that in our curriculum earlier? Do we need to make some adjustments? That's the way we use the assessments to respond at the district level in terms of the curriculum department. So yes, we have that, I just don't have it in front of me.
Yeah. And then, of course, one step further is, you know, if it was something where we needed to go back and reteach or be more, there is time for intervention. We're applying that.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah.
So that we can, those students can be prepared or have ever, every opportunity to be prepared.
Well, and the other thing, too, that I that I mentioned earlier that's really helpful is with Dr. Brown's group, the EDs, who are working with their individual learning communities, when they notice a content area at a grade level that's really struggling or there's a problem, they're working with the curriculum department to design an action plan that's customized for that learning community so that we can actualize change there. And that's been very.
That's good.
Beneficial, yeah.
Yeah, good. All right. So my next question on reading is, you know, there's been a lot of effort with the reading academies that were required with HB3 or in that legislative session, applying the science of reading and not necessarily the balanced literacy framework that we use. And I noticed we're spending a lot of time on phonetic awareness and some of the things that are outlined in those, what, five domains of of that. Are we starting to see payoff with that increased focus on the science of reading that that the teachers are trained on with the reading academies, or is it too early to tell?
I haven't had an, I haven't, we haven't done any analysis specifically pulling the data for teachers who actually participated and finished the academy versus those that didn't to see if there's a difference in achievement. We can run that. We haven't done that yet. That's a good idea. I will say that the learning that they have around the science of reading, the only difference between that and the balanced literacy model is it is, is you leverage the science of teaching reading in balanced literacy, you just put it in a structure with balanced literacy. But it's, you don't necessarily do different things, you just do it in a structured way. It's kind of the way I think about active learning cycle versus best practices. You have the best practices active learning cycle just organizes when and how you do them. And that's kind of the same idea. So what we could do, and I think that's actually a really good idea, regardless of how well we're doing, we're still going to have to do it, but the idea would be to how do we support people and their implementation of it, if I can know whether it's making a difference or not. So we can do that. It's it's only reason it's a little early for this year's cohorts, because they're still going through it. And last year, it it was all online and they were all at, you know, at home during COVID. But I think it's worth the effort to do that, and we totally, we could completely do that. I just hadn't thought about that, to be honest. So it's a good idea.
It'd be interesting to see the effectiveness on it, and we need to.
I think so, too.
Double down on some of those things.
Yeah.
And so you, I was a little, it's been a while since I took notes on this and you covered it, but you talked about moving to M-class to provide a, when you were talking about M-class, you talked about the ability to use artificial intelligence to provide highly personalized adaptive learning to meet each kid where they are in reading. Is that correct?
We do that right now for iStation.
That's in istation.
And then in M-class.
That's, yeah, correct me. Thanks for correcting me. My question was this. Are we, you're, you do that now in iStation. Will you have that same ability in M-class?
I I know the M-class tools look a little different. I don't, I don't know if it's at the same exact level. I have to go look that, look into that. M-class is a little more customized in that there's more teacher interaction on M-class than there is necessarily on iStation. iStation is independently done using the software system, whereas M-class, actually, the teacher is leveraged as part of that process. But there is progress monitoring and customized grouping that happens there. I know that there is a software system that we've talked about in my, in the curriculum department to respond to students in that way. I just can't remember off the top of my head the name of it. But I I believe the answer is yes. I just, I'm, it's slipping my mind, to be honest.
Well, my final question is this, and it's a big one. I don't want to put you on the spot. But now that we've been at CA one, now that you have CA two, I don't know who, if it was me or someone asked this, you know, several times before, what keeps you up at night now that you've seen the CA two results? What are the big, big concerns for
It's not a specific standard. The thing that keeps me up at night is the stuff we've been talking about the rest of the meeting, to be honest, because that's what's preventing the numbers from moving the way you want it to.
Yeah.
I can't tell you how many times Dr. Brown and I have had this conversation, and Dr. Cavassos and I have had this conversation. There's so, we're in such a weird time in our history, that you have all these outside things that you can't control that are causing issues to the things that you want to control, and you can't fix those problems. So you just mitigate them the best that you can. And as you can see from our conversations tonight, it gets down to something as basic as, do I have a teacher standing in front of students? It's part of the reason why academic services is going into schools to sub is because we've talked as a team. We can do all this work, but if I don't have a teacher standing in front of that student, then it is for naught. And so if I, if you really want to know what keeps me up at night, that's it. It's, it's, I'm, we're trying to, it's not the standards, it's all that I know if I can get teachers teaching them that they'll get there. It's just the world is creating so many challenges to just show up. And so that's, that's really what it is, to be honest.
Yeah. And that's my concern, too. In fact, I think, we were joking earlier, Mr. Hogs suggested, maybe it's time we all, as trustees, sign up as subs to go into the classroom. Because we know there's a big need there to prevent everything that's going on in the outside world from derailing our plans to get these kids back on track. And I think I told them I thought it was a good idea. It's time to roll up our sleeves. So thank you, Dr. Wertz.
You're welcome.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Will Banks. Are there any other questions? Thank you once again, Dr. Wertz. So the next discussion item on our agenda is the Task B Board Policy Update, 118, Policy CDA local and Policy EF local. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Mays. And this evening, we bring for a discussion, policy updates. And as customary, we bring the discussion, one meeting, and then we bring it to action, for action, the other one. Dr. Hill will summarize, and also Mr. Chapa and the Governance Committee has taken a deep dive in these as well. So, Dr. Hill?
All right. Thank you. And we'll get right into this update. Again, this is not new to us. A just a little background, Policy Update 118 encompasses both legal and local policies that are recommended from TASB, and administration recommends some revisions to CDA and EF local for your consideration. Again, the legal updates, so changes in laws, legal policies should not be adopted, only reviewed by administration and the board. The local policies need board action to actually adopt, revise, or appeal any local policies. Update 118 has 132 policies total, 120 from the legal aspect, and 12 are from local. And again, CDA and EF are recommended from administration. The process thus far has included the appropriate staff reviewing these policies, the Board Governance Committee reviewing these policies, our legal team has looked at them, and we've also had some conversation with TASB regarding what some of our recommendations are. Just a closer look at some of the policies. And again, you had this, this handouts. I won't go into all the details, but just to highlight some of the 132 policies. One dealing with accountability. Details regarding accountability, performance ratings have been added from the Senate Bill 1365 that reflects the no, not rated in the D ratings. Some clarification about election, the process for elections and runoffs. The, another policy here about other revenues, and basically, House Bill 1525 requires that a district accept donations from a parent, teacher organization, or an, or an association to fund supplemental educational staff positions. That's just a law that's changed. Again, I won't go through all of these, just a few of them. We'll look at one that talks about special programs. EHBB eliminates the requirement for the district to annually certify its gifted program to TE, to the commissioner. Student activities at FM prohibits a district from excluding a student from participation in UL because a student receives outpatient mental health services. So another one that I wanted to share, some legal and some local ones here. So just about account accounting and activity funds, clarification that student activity funds are raised and collected by student organizations, and the expenditures, expending those funds rests with the student organizations with administrative oversight. CQB talks about the elimination of annual training except for the, the cybersecurity coordinator. There's another one that I wanted to bring attention to, because we talked about it a little bit today in one of the presentations. That is FEC provides an exception, no, that's, no, that is, provides an exception for the 90% rule for certain situations that students may be in. And it really focuses on mastery of the content versus seat time. And I thought that was a good one, that would really be able to impact some of the work that we're doing and the challenges that we have now. These are the two local policies that administration are bringing for recommendation, other revenues and investments. And it's lengthening the allowed maturity of certain investments from one year to two years. And then the instructional resources, this revision basically provides a standard for the, for the district, for any procedures that are challenging some instructional materials, just puts it in a more standard form and leaves less the chance for inconsistency. So our next step is to continue to review these legal and local policies and their impacts within the district and within the different various departments, and bring it back for consideration for your approval at the February 3rd board meeting. As Dr. Cavassos mentioned, we've had a meeting with the Governance Committee. They've kind of given some feedback on some of these policies. And we'll have any questions that you may have for us today or the Governance Committee.
Thank you very much, Dr. Hill. Mr. Chapa?
Thank you, President Mays. I don't have much to add to to Dr. Hill's.
Thank you, President Mays. I don't have much to add to, to Dr. Hill's presentation. As with many of these policy updates, many of these are just technical in nature, reflect updates to existing laws and procedures, or just streamlining. So with that, I'll just, if there are any specific questions, I may be able to answer some, but probably will turn it over to Dr. Hill. And if not, we can move on.
Thank you, Mr. Chapa. Mr. Hogg?
Ms. Chapa, move on. I agree with you 100%. Let me, let me just ask one little thing, because I, I think most of these policies are, are right on, you know, some good things of allowing students to get their driver's permit and some of those things. Let me just ask one, Mr. Hill, tiny technical question, just because I go through this, read it, look at all the red lines, and they're critical. Unlike, near the back is, is one example on FL Local A. We have them in blue, the new text, and then the red text, and it's the exact same thing. That's like in four or five spots. So I'm just, that's literally my technical question is all I'm asking is. And we've had that in the past, and I think I was tired the last time, and I didn't ask. So I'm just asking you about that tonight.
Unfortunately, it's probably going to be in the future ones, too. We asked TASB about that, and it's some sort of editing software that is, they can't explain it. I, that, that's literally what they told me.
They're having, they're having a hard time explaining a lot of things right now, this time of the year, so, that's fine.
But it's all cleaned up once we.
Yeah, I just read through it. I'm like, I like read it, I probably read that five times, because I'm like, it looks the same. What am I missing on there? And then I think I can't spell, and that's probably a realistic thing. So that, that was my only question. Thank you to the Governance Committee. We always have to be diligent on these TASB policies to make sure they match with our district. I think these are on board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hogg. Thank you once again to our Governance Committee, Justin Chapa Chair, Melody Fowler, and Sarah McMurra. Thank you very much, Dr. Hill. Appreciate it. Okay, next thing on our agenda is our open forum for non-agenda items. Benjamin, do we have any requesters registered to address? Okay. So we have no registered speakers, so we will move on on our agenda. Superintendent's report. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Mays. And I've got some items to share about our district. So congratulations first and foremost to our very own Coach Anthony Chris. Coach Chris recently stepped away from coaching and is now working at Carter Junior High, and is being honored by the Texas High School Coaches Association with its Coaching Beyond the Game Award next month. Coach Chris, who has coached for many years, but spent the last 11 as head coach at Sam Houston High School, is being honored for his impact on his team, school, and community because of his passion and commitment to coach beyond the game. Coach Chris will give a speech, which if you haven't heard him speak, this may be a great opportunity, at the organization's Leadership Summit that happens to be in Arlington at the end of February. So you see his picture there. Congratulations to Coach Chris for all his accomplishments and his tenure with our district and his impact on young people over many years. So congratulations to Coach Chris. More congratulations are in order to another AISD employee. This time, it's Berry Elementary librarian Carol Hughes. We want to recognize her if we can catch her. Hughes, it's written here, so I got to give credit to whoever wrote this. Yeah, that's not mine. It's, but anyway, Hughes has been at Berry since 2016 and ran the Philadelphia Marathon in November. While running one marathon is a huge accomplishment, it's really nothing for her. That's because that marathon marked the 50th for Ms. Hughes. Hughes is also able to use her running to inspire readers at the school. She uses her experience to try to get students to stretch themselves, and that the more they practice at anything, the more the results they will see. So congratulations to Ms. Hughes. If you drive down North Cooper, you recently, or you've driven by North Cooper recently, you'll see Webb Elementary. And of course, it's been there, but you'll see the new Webb coming up, and it's reached a milestone that it's, it's going vertical. Steel frame is now up, and so you can see the skeleton of that building, and it's a really exciting time for Webb. It's, as you, as everyone knows, it's part of our rebuilding of some, of schools that have aged facilities. And I often say that when the school is being built and the students are seeing that school being built, it's really, really a phenomenal experience, because eventually, depending on their age and their grade level, they'll be in the new school. So they see it with anticipation, just like we do and our community does. So again, a big thank you to all our community, the 2019 bond, and the voters for making this possible. Last but not least, I want to thank Ella B's and all the partners who helped put on a generous hands holiday gift back dinner last month. We were fortunate to be one of the, the servers at the event. Many of us participated in that. It was a great part of the night, especially considering that the evening benefited more than 100 people involved in the district's Families and Transition Program, and they were able to enjoy dinner. And our students left with toys, shoes, and groceries for their families. Thank you to everyone. Thanks to the Parent and, Parent and Community Engagement Department, Aaron Peralles, Mr. Phillips, and others, everyone who was there. And a special thank you to, is it Joe Looney? Is that right, Michael? Yeah. Uh, Joe Looney from the Dallas Cowboys, as you see pictured there. He was, as he has joined our schools before and has awarded our teachers and his representatives the Dallas Cowboys. And he's just an excitable person and fun to be around. He carries a lot of plates, and he helped us out because he carried them all. So we were just very happy to be there and, and making sure that, that our families felt supported. So thank you for everybody who participated. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Dr. Cavassos. And you forgot to say, and Santa Claus left with a massage cart that we put together for him. He had a rough night, but he did awesome. He had a rough night with the kids. Okay, so next in our agenda, do we have any trustee reports? Okay, so I just have two things that I want to say as, as president, and it is, uh, school board recognition. I just want to say to Dr. Reich, to David Will Banks, to Melody Fowler, to Bowie Hogg, to Sarah McMurra, and to Justin Chapa, thank y'all very much for your leadership and your commitment to our students, the staff, our community. And thank you for your dedication and your hard work for our district. And thank you for, as our students said tonight, for rising above all the challenges that we have as y'all continue to move this district into the future. So just as honored as I am to serve as, as president, I just want to verbally say thank y'all very much. Okay, and then the other thing that I wanted to say is, as Pastor Joan said, MLK celebrations that we normally have over our four-day period have been postponed, not canceled. But still just remember to take time to follow what the theme is, and that is take time to reflect, imagine how you want to see the world, and then work on building the future that way. Okay, that's my report. Ms. Secretary, do we have any items to consider?
Madam President, I think the only one was Mr. Chapa, and he had a question on the compensation when teachers sub, wanted to know the amount that they receive.
Thank you very much. So it is 10:39, and this meeting is adjourned.